Okay, we're going to begin with a rule call.
Certainly, I'm going to start with those attending virtually, Mr. Pachus.
Present.
Ms. Langgallis.
Here.
Ms. Tabacznik.
Here.
Mr. Bryce.
Present.
I believe that's everybody virtual, Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Rowena.
Here.
And Mr. Schuman.
Here.
Okay, for purposes of the meeting, for the first item on the agenda, I'm going to seat Ms. Tabacznik and Mr. Pachus. All right, the first item is review and action on new and or pending applications. We have an A twenty-four referral, and that's the Norwalk Department of Public Works acceptance of a point zero one two two acre stormwater drainage easement over seven and nine Lenwood Avenue. Do we have a representative from Department of Public Works with us?
You're muted. You can start about that. Commissioner Schuman, Darren Callian with Corporation Council's office. I don't believe anyone from Public Works will be on. I could explain why this is on today's calendar. Just very briefly, the Department of Public Works is actually requesting an easement over this private property, the property owner is willing to grant it. But the official process for whether you're conveying city-owned property or accepting new property as the city, it requires a A twenty-four review with consistency with the P O C D and council approval. So we are actually being granted the easement. We are not conveying any land ourselves, but we are receiving land rights at the request of the Public Works Department. The odds, I believe, is actually part of a site plan approval. That was a condition of the private site. So that is the issue before the commission today. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the stormwater drainage easement?
I'm moved to approve.
Okay, Mr. Rowena has moved. Is there a second? Okay.
I'll second you. Tammy.
Okay, Tammy has seconded. I think we can do this with a show of hands. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Okay, we approve the easement.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lou, this is Galen. I'm here now.
I did that. Thank you, Galen. All right, Galen Wells says commissioner has joined the meeting as well. All right, next, we're going to move on to public hearings, which I believe is the reason so many of you are with us this evening. This is twenty twenty-four dash nineteen SPR CAM O N G Industries, twenty thirty-four, forty, forty-six, forty-eight, and fifty, South Smith Street, District One, Lot Fifty-nine, lots nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, and seventeen. It's reconfiguration and changes to an existing materials yard. For those of you who have taken time out of your busy days to join us this evening, let me explain how we conduct our hearings. First, the representative of the applicant will explain the project in as much detail as they feel is necessary. When that has been completed, and throughout, by the way, throughout that process, members of the commission are free to ask any, any questions they have. When that is completed, we will open it up for public comment. A couple of important things about public comment. The first being, we ask that you give us your name and your address. We ask that you be as brief as possible while making sure that you cover all of the points that are important to you. We don't place a time limit on you, but we do ask that you be as brief as you can be. We ask that your comments be G P. And we will listen courteously to all of your comments. This is not a dialogue between you and us. We're here to listen to what you have to say. And we will take that into account when it comes time to reach a decision. Once you've made, everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity. We then turn it back to the applicant to respond to the questions and the comments that they've heard. Once that is completed, we will close the public hearing and move on to action by the commission. I can't speak with any certainty, but if I had to guess, I would say that, given the large number of people who wish to speak, that we will not get to that final step this evening. I'm hoping that we can get through the presentation by the applicant, all of your public comments, public comments by the intervenor, who is representing, I believe, the neighborhood, at which point we will probably close and continue the hearing and go into discussion of what we've heard at our next meeting, which is the following Wednesday. Keep in mind, you have only one opportunity to speak, so again, I encourage you, make sure, even while keeping it brief, that you get in all of the points that are important to you. At some point in the meeting, if it's, there is a natural break when the applicant has completed their remarks, we will probably take a ten or twelve-minute break so that we can go to the bathroom, get something to drink, because we understand it's going to be a long evening. I think that's it, Steve. Did I miss anything? I think you're all set. Okay. With that, we will turn it over to the applicant's representative, Attorney Sachi. Oh, I guess there is one more point. You, you may not be the only folks who wish to speak. There are undoubtedly some people online who wish to speak. So we'll go back and forth. We'll have someone from the audience speak, and then someone who's online. Back and forth. I'm sure there are more of you here than there are those online who wish to speak. So when we finish with all the online folks, it will be exclusively those in this audience who are speaking. Apologies, please.
Can you say who is seated for this one? I know I was seated for the last one. I wasn't sure if I was seated for this one as well.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford, and I represent the owner and applicant, that is, O N G Industries Incorporated. Present this evening, and most of these individuals you will hear testimony from, is Matt Neglia, a principal of O N G. He's in the front row to my right. To the right of Ms. Renalia is Richard Warren, also of O N G. Robert Walker, professional engineer with Land Tech. He is available. I will be presenting via Zoom. Neil Alinsky, traffic engineer with S L R Consulting. He is also going to be presenting via Zoom, along with George Andrews, a licensed environmental professional with Lorero Associates, who is also going to be online via Zoom. Just some background information, neighbors were notified of the submission of this application via certificate of mailing on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. The certificate was returned to the staff and should be part of the permanent file. Neighbors were then notified of tonight's public hearing, originally scheduled to commence, and which did commence on June fifth, by certified mail return receipt requested on May twenty-fourth. Packages of the green domestic return receipt cards were delivered to staff prior to that meeting, and then again this week, along with any letters that were returned as undeliverable, and with tracking information on letters that had not yet been returned or for which we have not received the domestic return receipt cards. Before we begin, I'd like to just make a very brief statement with respect to what this meeting is all about. The length of our presentation is certainly not an effort to filibuster or to run out the clock, as some may believe. Our presentation, however long it may be, is necessary to create a thorough and complete record before this commission. This is important because in the event of an appeal, whether that might be by aggrieved parties or my client, the appeal is based upon the record created before you through the documents and testimony of me, my clients, its consultants, and the public. There's no, generally no new presentation to the court with an appeal. So that's why it may be lengthy, and if it's lengthy, we apologize, but it's necessary. So let's begin. As I mentioned before, the owner applicant is O N G Industries Incorporated. The location of this project is Smith Street in Norwalk, which is bordered to the east by Smith Street, to the west by the Norwalk River, and to the north and south by their commercially industrial and residentially developed parcels. It's been characterized in the city's industrial land use plan of September twenty-two as, quote, "a low-visibility site that's not well-connected to the open space network or street network, and is one of the few sites with water-dependent industrial capacity along Norwalk's federal navigational channel." I would ask that the industrial land use plan of September twenty-two be made part of the record. O N G was among the stakeholders that the city's consultant, U Teal, interviewed to gain input into the land use plan. The lot size is about three acres, composed of a variety of different parcels. At the time of the submission of the application, the property was owned Central Business District, or CBD. And at this point, I would like to submit for the record, so that you have it, a copy of the CBD regulations that were in existence at the time of submission. The reason for that is, this application therefore will be, should be reviewed under those regulations and not under the new regulations that this commission adopted in December of twenty twenty-three and which became effective on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Under the Central Business District, in effect at the time of submission, the use to which we'd like to put the property and for which the applications have been submitted was a use permitted by site plan review. Incidentally, the new regulations, which, as I said, don't apply, also permit this use, but by special permit. The preamble to the Central Business District regulation states in part that the CBD zone seeks to provide a balance of uses and amenities that foster a vital, economic, livable, innovative, and cultural area to encourage clean industrial uses and to maintain water-dependent uses for properties abutting the Norwalk River. Now, a little history, zoning history of the parcel. Generally, this parcel was owned industrial or heavy industrial from the late nineteen twenties into the early nineteen eighties. It was then rezoned Central Business District Sub area C in nineteen eighty-seven, and then several years ago was rezoned Central Business District. Some historic uses on the property. Sinclair Oil, a nearly hundred-year-old company, was one of the first occupants and owners of the parcel. It was in Norwalk in the late nineteen thirties and early nineteen forties. Then it was not in Norwalk for some time, but some of you may now know that it reappeared as a gas station on Main Avenue near Merritt Seventh. The familiar dinosaur emblem brand is reminiscent of Sinclair and has always been its brand. It was, the properties were also occupied by Meeker Coal, Norwalk Asphalt, Norwalk Concrete, DeDario Industries, Mobile Oil, and then O N G, who purchased the properties in nineteen ninety. The predecessor to you, the Planning and Zoning Commission, approved the uses of the site for asphalt and concrete plants in the mid nineteen fifties, and those uses are legally nonexisting uses, legally nonconforming uses. Some of the existing conditions on the site. There are various movable structures that have been used for the processing, storage, and transport of aggregate materials and the asphalt plant. The property even contains a seawall for barge docking along the Norwalk River, which is consistent with a water-dependent use, and which has been used in the past by O N G and others. There have been material stockpiles, processing equipment, other structures, and access drives to and from the property. As I mentioned before, O N G has operated with proper permits or has an established legally nonconforming use, asphalt plant, and a number of other similar industrial enterprises on the property, and those go back to Meeker Coal, Norwalk Asphalt, Norwalk Concrete, DeDario, and now my client. O N G serves Norwalk and other municipalities in Fairfield County around the state. It supplies asphalt and other construction materials to homeowners, landscapers, builders, construction companies, local municipalities like Norwalk, and the state of Connecticut for myriad recent construction projects, including those that positively impact Norwalk and its growth, such as the Sonno collection. O N G has owned and occupied many of these parcels for more than thirty years, and as I gave you some of the history before. In addition, the Norwalk River Rowing Association, a water-dependent commercial recreation use, stores some of its recent skulls on a portion of the southernmost portion of the property through a gentleman's agreement with O N G. The site has been recognized by the city as a facility that stores materials delivered by barge. I ask you to take judicial notice of communication from the city over the years. First, a nineteen ninety letter by former zoning inspector Martin Mayer confirming the uses that were permitted in the CBD zone. A nineteen ninety-five analysis by former zoning officer Jim Bradley in connection with a zoning board of appeals application for special exception to allow Sabre Tree to occupy an existing building at the northern side of the property. And most recently, in June twenty nineteen, an email from former senior planner Dory Wilson with former planning and zoning director Michael Rin and current director Steve Kleppen on copy regarding their review of an initial draft CAM application for an aggregate distribution facility dependent upon waterborne transportation that was submitted by O N G. Just after that analysis by staff, COVID hit, so O N G did not proceed with that application. The city has recognized the significance of industry on the waterfront in its industrial waterfront land use report. Quote, "Norwalk's waterfront already has in its DNA both the challenges or tensions and the synergies and co-benefits that come from industrial uses, commercial uses, and recreational and hospitality uses co-mingling," end quote. Further, the report noted, quote, "This means continuing to maintain the delicate balance between preserving and reinvesting in industrial and commercial operations on the waterfront and making the most of tourism and recreation sectors that also plan and play an important role in the regional economy," end quote. Moreover, the report stated that, quote, "Many of the existing essential industrial services provide a valued service that is essential for the smooth operation of the regional economy, like aggregates. Prioritizing the waterfront for water-dependent industrial and commercial uses is essential to maintain enough critical mass to sustain investment in the expensive shared infrastructure required to support the local economy," end quote. And finally, the report added, quote, "Norwalk's waterfront has balanced industrial, commercial, and recreational uses of the water and has, over time, found ways that these uses can coexist so long as residents and visitors enjoy what the water offers in ways that have limited impact on the industrial and commercial businesses that rely on the water for their operations," end quote. So what are we here for before you tonight? I'd like to make clear that the site plan application and the associated coastal area management application are for the storage and processing of aggregate materials that are dependent upon waterborne transportation. It's not about the plant, the asphalt plant that exists, its operation. That is not part of this application. We're not discussing it. It's not part of any of the documentation we submitted. So it should not come into play when you consider this application moving forward. There are two applications and two sets of standards to evaluate. The first is a site plan review application, and the second is a coastal area management or CAM application. And for the record, I would just like to submit a copy of the site plan requirements from the regulations, and that was section one eighteen fourteen fifty-one, and the coastal zone requirements, that is, one eighteen eleven ten. Documents that I just submitted were those in effect at the time of the filing. So as you listen to our presentation on this proposal and on proposed use, including the testimony of experts, comments from the public, I remind you to keep in mind, first, the standards of site plan review in the Central Business District Zone. Those are traffic, off-street parking and loading, landscaping and screening, illumination, utilities, and the impact on the, quote, "safe and orderly development of any adjacent property." Unlike the industrial number one and the industrial number two zones, there are no additional environmental standards for review in the Central Business District Zone. That may have applied to other projects that you recently heard, heard about, and acted upon that were zoned industrial, but those standards do not apply in the Central Business District Zone, so they are not relevant. Second, there are certainly standards of review for coastal area management application, and they are, one, consistency with the Coastal Area Management Act, which has been confirmed by the state of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection; two, coastal resources near to the site and the projects' effects on them, and we will get into that and just address them shortly; and three, coastal policies affected by the proposal, which we will also address. Other considerations outside these standards of review that have been articulated and are set forth in the regulations that I've submitted for the record would be improper for you to consider, as they would be outside the scope of your authority of review. As for the petition for intervention, you are charged with determining if the proposal is reasonably likely to unreasonably affect the public trust in a natural resource. We submit that our proposal will not unreasonably adversely affect the public trust in a natural resource, and this position is based upon written documentation and testimony that you will hear from experts in their respective fields. The proposal also includes the enhancement of historic industrial use of the site dating back almost a hundred years. Materials processing and storage is dependent upon waterborne transit, and that's a use recognized by the city. Barges would come to and from the site and dock at the facility on the eastern bank of the Norwalk River. This reduces truck transportation of aggregate on I ninety-five and saves O N G and its clients both time and expense. Materials would be brought to the site first from quarries along the Hudson River. That's the aggregate or the stone that is quarried, put on the barge, and then brought to the site. The second would be sand that's mined off the coast of New Jersey, and again, brought to the site. We have agreed that it would be eight barges per month. The materials would be offloaded from the barges and then stored on the site. There wouldn't be further processing of the materials on the site. There's no rock crushing, simply for storage. And then the aggregate and the sand, which are naturally occurring materials, would be transported from the site to various job sites. The project also envisions improvements to the site, including the construction of material storage bins, which would have covers and tarps to prevent particulate matter and dust from getting into the air, which is required, a truck scale and office trailer, installation of a water quality chamber to improve water being discharged from the site and into the Norwalk River, vegetative screening along Smith Street. All of these improvements are within previously developed and disturbed areas. So coastal area management analysis, which you will hear more from Tom Ryder. Property is within the CAM zone. It has six hundred thirty feet of Norwalk River frontage. Coastal resources, which are applicable or nearby, include general resources, coastal hazard areas, coastal waters, estuarine embayment, and developed shorefront. The coastal use policies that are applicable are general development, water-dependent uses, and ports and harbors. The area has no natural features remaining. There are no shellfish beds mapped in this section of the Norwalk River, and this section of the river has been categorized as prohibited. We don't believe there will be any adverse impacts. There will be no degradation of water quality or circulation patterns, no degradation of erosion or drainage patterns, no degradation of natural features or public visits or viewpoints, no increase in coastal flooding hazard, and no degradation to wildlife, finfish, or shellfish habitat. Accordingly, we believe the proposal represents clearly a water-dependent use in a location that is physically suited for such use and should be deemed consistent with the Coastal Area Management Act and acceptable to the city. As I mentioned earlier, the application and supporting documents were submitted on February sixteenth, excuse me, on February fifteenth, and then were hand-delivered to the fire department, which signed off in February, W P C A and D P W, which sent comments that we still are working on, the First District Water Department, the city's Transportation, Mobility, and Parking Department, otherwise known as T N P. We received comments from them on April first, including a request for an updated traffic report. S L R completed that report and submitted on May fifteenth, and we just received additional comments from T N P on June eleventh. We also received comments from A K R F, which is the city's peer review consultant, both on a traffic and environmental area. The Planning and Zoning Department shared comments with us on March fifteenth, and we replied to those comments on May twenty-third, and hopefully you have received a copy of our responses, so you have them to consider. The city's harbor management commission reviewed the proposal twice and decided that it was consistent with the city's harbor management plan. And lastly, the Department of Environmental Protection Office of Long Island Sound Programs determined the use was a water-dependent use and therefore consistent with the goals of the Coastal Area Management Act and correspondence from D E E P. O L I S P is in your file. At this point, I'd like to call Robert Walker of Land Tech to come on and explain the site plan. Mr. Walker? Unless you have any other, any questions for me, we move to Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Attorney Sachi. My name is Robert Walker. I am a civil engineer with Land Tech Consulting, and we've been brought on by O N G to develop a site plan for the proposed improvements to the site. Starting off, we have an aerial of the site and its existing condition. Moving from the west end to the east, we have the existing rowing storage and the asphalt plant, several areas of material storage, and general parking, and some more material storage, as well as the existing structure and parking lot. For the existing conditions, we are showing the removal of the existing asphalt piles located here and here on the site. This is the survey that was completed, showing locations of existing stormwater utilities and all of the structures that are both to remain and to be removed. Our proposal for this site includes, as mentioned, the removal of these several areas and the construction of several new material storage bays located along Smith Street, as well as near the loading barge, and, as mentioned by Attorney Sachi, the truck scale and scale house. Additionally, we have some landscaping proposed around Smith Street to provide screening for the site and a stormwater improvement of a hydrodynamic separator to provide water quality for the existing drainage. This system will tie directly into the existing storm pipes that currently collect the flow from the site and discharge it into the Norwalk River. This is a tried and proven technology that separates the oil and sediment from the stormwater using centrifugal force. This will have periodic maintenance that is outlined in the operations and maintenance plan that was included in the submittal to provide continued stormwater treatment over the lifespan of this project. Here we have some more information about this stormwater system, showing it in section view. This has been designed per the current Norwalk standards for water quality flows. And overall, those are the major improvements proposed on this site. So yes, if there are any questions, I can answer those now. Otherwise, I will hand it back to Attorney Sachi.
Any questions for Mr. Walker at this time?
Yes, Mr. Walker, a question for you. Can you identify where the public access is on the site plan?
Yes, absolutely. The public access is proposed at the western edge and then runs along a portion of the river here. Are there any other questions from the commission?
No other questions of Mr. Walker. I would like to just add a comment with respect to public access. This commission has the authority to waive public access when a use would be deemed to be inappropriate to be located next to or adjacent to or within the area where public access is typically required. In light of the proposal to use this site to transport aggregate and have a barge dock at the adjacent to the property, and then have aggregate moved from the barge onto the property, we have requested in our application that public access along the entirety of the waterfront not be provided. Furthermore, there are deed restrictions and environmental land use restrictions on the Furthermore, there are deed restrictions and environmental land use restrictions on the property that do not allow us to incorporate public access into the areas that would likely be what typically would be provided. We are more than happy, and our client has already indicated that we think it would be a benefit to the site and to the neighborhood to have that public access area along the southwestern section of the corner improved, so there could be viewing of the of the river and across the river. Also, it provides access directly down Moody's Lane, which is more convenient than coming across the property down Hubbell's Lane, crossing over where there's an existing building with savatory and accessing either through other properties to the north. There's also no access to the south to any other public access along the southern portion. If there are no other questions of Mr. Walker at this point, Mr. Warren? Mr. Warren, could you come up?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport. I appear before you on behalf of the intervenor head of the Harbor South, and I have some questions for the consultant.
No, I'm sorry. You can ask those questions during the public comment period. At this point? Okay, on the advice of staff?
Thank you, Mr.
Sure.
It might make sense if we finish the presentation. Perhaps some of the questions will be answered.
Please go ahead with your questions.
Mr. Walker, can you just briefly go over the stormwater system that you described and how it functions and where it gathers stormwater?
Yeah, absolutely. So the proposed stormwater improvement is a hydrodynamic separator. Let me flip to the details so we can see it in section view here. This is a structure that is going to tie into the existing stormwater pipes and allow runoff to flow through it and separate oil, grit, and other forms of trash and debris and store them in the bottom of the structure. This is periodically maintained by the use of a vacuum truck, which sucks out that debris, seeps for its removal, and prevents it from continuing on to the river.
And where does it receive stormwater from specifically? At what points on the site?
So it is, I can zoom in a bit here. It is tying into the existing storm manhole that is located here.
Mr. Walker, if you're sharing your screen, we can't see it.
Oh, my apologies.
Thank you.
So it is receiving stormwater from the existing catch basins located along Smith Street. If you can see my mouse right about there and then running along to here, here, and then further up along the site, as well as the existing catch basins located at several points within the site that tie into that same network.
And can you comment on how? Well, can we agree that the system that you are proposing is really designed for sand and grit and won't remove dissolved pollutants such as oils and other materials, metals that come off the many trucks that will be entering the site?
So the system is designed to remove a number of contaminants. I would be happy to share with you the full breakdown of everything it can do. It is approved throughout most of the United States through, or TSS of a total settlement solid to 80, I believe it's 80 millimeters, but I would have to confirm that. So if you want more information, I'm happy to provide the manufacturer's specs on everything that it's able to remove.
But generally, it's designed to remove suspended solids from stormwater, isn't it?
As a, it removes suspended solids as well as trash and some other debris.
Yeah, but not dissolved materials like petroleum products and metals. Is that correct?
Again, I would defer to the manufacturer's testing and their statements on the matter.
Well, you're aware, well, when you design the system, you're aware that there's, and while it has changed, that there are a number of trucks that will be entering the site, and I've heard 40 to 80 per day or 40 trips per day or 80 in and out. I take it you designed the system to accommodate that. Is that correct?
The system was designed for Norwalk standards for impervious areas, which do include parking and loading areas.
And what other equipment? There's going to be earth-moving materials, I'm sorry, equipment on the site to move the materials that are barged in. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
And when you design the system, what sort of equipment did you design it for? What are those? What is the nature and extent of the machinery?
This, the system is not designed for any one specific machinery. It is designed for pollutants.
I'm sorry, for?
It is designed for pollution and the water quality of the site.
And so is it your position then that this system, that system that is in place removes dissolved pollutants from stormwater?
So to clarify, the system is not currently in place. It is proposed.
Yes.
And it is my position that this will improve the water quality that is currently active on the site, from the site's current state. As to the exact pollutants it removes, again, I will have to defer you to the manufacturer's publications on what the system is capable of.
Well, you are familiar with the efficacy of those systems, aren't you?
Yes, I am familiar with the efficacy of these systems. We've used them on several automotive uses and had great success with them in the past.
Well, I'm asking you for your opinion as to whether it removes dissolved pollutants from water or not.
Again, with the exact dissolved pollutants, if I know it removes suspended solids, I do not have that exact piece of information in front of me. I would have to, again, defer to the manufacturer.
So as you're before the commission right now, you don't know if it removes those pollutants. Is that correct?
I would have to get back to you with additional information, yes.
All right. Next, on the site plan, can you identify the parking facilities that are in place for everyone who will be working on the site and working on the barges and operating the equipment and moving materials on the site? Where is that?
So there's the existing parking lot located on the eastern end of the site. And there is also, well, no specifically delineated parking area in here. The open space will shift for the project's needs as they continue operation.
Well, there is no delineated parking space other than parking spaces other than on the northern portion of the site. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And you're aware that there was a special exception granted with respect to this property previously. Is that correct?
I would ask you to clarify which special exception you are referring to exactly.
Well, I've submitted into evidence the records with respect to a special exception that was granted by this commission with respect to savatory. Are you familiar with those materials?
Mr. Chairman, going beyond interveners, initial questions? If I may, the special exception was not ratified by the zoning committee. It was the zoning board of appeals in 1999.
Well, Attorney Suchi is correct about that, and I misspoke. It was ZBA, but it was a special exception. And I will tie it in, Mr. Chairman, because obviously your regulations do have requirements on parking areas and on providing parking and I have submitted into the record the ZBA records, and I am corrected on that. And those parking spaces are dedicated to savatory pursuant to the special exception. So that's why I'm asking, and I think we've established that there is no parking established for this use on the site. With that, I'll sit down happily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for myself before I hand it back to Attorney Sochi?
Thank you, Mr. Any other questions for Mr. Walker? Just a point of clarification, the site is three acres. We're not proposing any structure on the site. There's more than ample space to accommodate the parking necessary for the few employees that will be on the site. We'll get into that in just a minute. At this point, Mr. Warren, could you come to the podium?
Good evening, Chair Coleman, members of the commission. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Richard Warren. I am here on behalf of ONG Industries. I'm Assistant Vice President of Facilities. I've been with the company for 28 years. Thank you for listening to our presentation. I wanted to provide some background of the company because we have not been before you as ONG in a great while. ONG is a Connecticut-based corporation, started in 1923. We've just celebrated our 100th anniversary last year. We are a family business, not my family, although I am treated like family as far as I'm concerned, run by the fourth generation of family members currently. There are approximately 900 employees of ONG Industries, which expands as construction needs expand project by project if there is greater work that we are working on. We operate in 14 different municipalities throughout the state, including four other sites that are water-dependent. So we have experience working on the waterfront, working with other users of the water, working with both harbor commissions and recreational users of the water. The company itself, we are vertically integrated. We operate materials quarries, concrete and asphalt, and architectural stone manufacturing facilities, mason materials sales showrooms, and we perform construction management, heavy highway, and civil construction throughout the state. We have, we're very proud to say we've worked on school construction projects in every town in the state, including Norwalk. A little bit of history of our presence in Norwalk, if you would. We've been in Norwalk since 1990 after purchasing the property on Smith Street, which existed with a permitted operating asphalt plant. We understood the site to be a beneficial use for bringing materials in by water, limiting truck trips on the road to then be processed on-site. A clarification for you tonight. The application this evening is for storage, stockpiling, and distribution of materials. There is no processing planned in this application, no processing equipment other than unloading and loading equipment. If you consider that processing, there is no no crushing, no sorting, no sanding to be done on the site through this. We participated in our presence in Norwalk. We participated in discussions in the early 2000s supporting the dredging of the Federal National Navigation Channel in the Norwalk River in order to maintain waterborne commerce. At that time, I know that there are letters that indicate that the federal channel comes right up to the bulkhead at ONG. At the time of the dredging, it was decided that in order to allow our operations to continue, the federal channel line would be relocated, and it was done through an act of Congress so that barge birthing could occur at our site. We also, as a stakeholder, participated in discussions about the Walk Bridge, requesting that it remain an operable bridge in order to continue waterborne commerce to the Norwalk River. We've maintained an industrial presence and continued to raise concerns as zoning changes have occurred about maintaining our operating use, our ability to operate within the zone on the property that we have purchased. We also believe that we've been operating as good neighbors. During the time of our presence on Smith Street, we've allowed Norwalk River Rowing Club to utilize a portion of the southern section of the property for their office space and equipment storage while they were undergoing plans and construction of their larger space. They continue to maintain a presence on the south end of the property at this moment. We also continue to maintain a gentleman's agreement, allowing the use of our bulkhead for movement of barge material when deliveries across the river to our friendly competitor. We worked together. We often use the same suppliers, the same vendors, so the ability to move barges and be able to go across the river between the sites was beneficial as deliveries were being made. Again, as far as being a good neighbor, after negative silting impacts occurred after Hurricane Irene on the to the Norwalk Boat Club to the north, we entered an arrangement to offload their dredged material onto our property and allow it to then be hauled off trucking for offsite disposal. I would like to express again, clarify the item of the plans before you in this hearing. We are looking to utilize the site for waterborne transportation and storage of raw aggregate materials. They would be sand and stone for sale and use in local construction projects. We are not proposing a new market. We are not looking to expand a market. We are looking to more efficiently operate within a market in which we already operate. The materials are virgin product. No manufacturing again or processing is being proposed with this application. We're looking to codify pre-existing rights. The material that we talk about, sand, stone, aggregate, as we call it, may be used for drainage, roadbase, underlayment, or as components of asphalt and concrete production elsewhere. The National Sand and Stone, I'm sorry, the National Stone, Sand, and Gravel Association estimates that for every individual in the US, almost 10 tons of stone per year are used. We don't often pay attention to what we may or may not use or what we are using underneath our tires, underneath our sidewalks. ONG provides those materials, provides them to local contractors, provides them for our own construction use, and we all do benefit from them. Due to the weight of the materials, aggregates such as this, reducing the length of travel and transport for use helps to keep materials affordable for all involved. And as a side note, as carbon footprint becomes a greater concern, reducing carbon costs and getting materials to a job will become an even greater concern. Therefore, again, the benefit of barging material versus putting materials on the already congested highway, leaving trucks idling. We are asking to reconfigure the storage bins and install a new truck scale in order to sell virgin aggregate products rather than perform any processing. Again, I'm repeating myself. I apologize. I would like to briefly address concerns that have been raised in many letters, many reports. I believe some things that were erroneously picked up and repeated, and I would like to address a few of those. Contamination, all products coming to the site are, under this permit, would be virgin aggregate products. Stone quarried from, again, as Attorney Suchi said, stone quarried from quarries up along the Hudson, partially further east in Connecticut and sand out of Long Island Sound and from sites in New Jersey. The site contamination, there was discussion about contamination that was most recently cleaned up on the site. There was a cleanup accomplished by ONG Industries through dredging. That contamination came from the prior occupant of the site. The company known as Pharaoh Corporation used to manufacture lead x-ray aprons. When you go to the dentist and get, used to get your teeth mouth x-rayed, they were manufacturing those aprons there at that facility. And what was found was that lead and antimony had leached into the soils there and into the Norwalk River. ONG undertook a cleanup of that material to the satisfaction of the Connecticut DEEP. I will say that at all ONG industries, all ONG facilities, we maintain spill prevention plans and stormwater plans as necessary under the guidance of the Connecticut DEEP, which include required inspections and updates as necessary for any changes to our properties. This site will not be any different. We have plans in place. We will update them as an approval is granted, and we will address any concerns that arise towards those plans. There were concerns raised about material spillage, and I will say that during the requested cleanup dredging in 2021, 22, ONG undertook additional dredging of the river to maintain our birthing capabilities as close to our bulkhead as possible. So we have already made efforts to make sure that we will minimize any potential for spilling. We are willing to install rubber spill mats at material unloading times to minimize any potential for spillage into the river. And I will note that material spillage is a lost product to ONG, so it's not beneficial economically to us. There is no reason that we would encourage that, and so we are making every effort to avoid any item like that. I will point out that current major silting of the river, the Norwalk River in that area, happens to come from the city storm drainage outfall at the bottom of Moody's Lane, which is unfortunately negatively impacting the Norwalk River Rowing Association, their access to the river. As far as access to the river, ONG, again, provided space to the rowing club for many years, continues to provide that space. We, I want to point out, we maintain positive relationships in all other towns in which we operate, working on waterfront operations, dealing with harbor commissions and marina owners. The barges that bring material to us operate under Coast Guard licenses, dealing with the harbor masters, harbor commissions, maintain whatever permits and regulations they are required to operate under. And we operate very favorably through other marina properties, through other recreational boat users. It is possible for us to coexist, we believe. I would say in several towns and cities across the state, while ONG understands and supports the desire for public access to water, we've always noted that where industrial operations based on water dependency exist, there must be alternative paths around those properties. We would be happy, as an aside, to coordinate any material deliveries in the most favorable and responsible manner, sharing with our similar user across the river and being aware of recreational users in and around the river. I will point out again, during the most recent dredging event in 2021, 2022, even with the need to maintain a turbidity curtain around that dredging project, we were cognizant of others and never received a complaint about blocking access to the river. Harm to the neighborhood, we would, we intend to operate within any appropriate restrictions as to noise, dust, hours of operations, or other concerns which may be raised. which are appropriately regulated by code or statute. We believe we maintain open and responsive communications. Uh, I am a contact source for around our quarries, the neighbors around our quarries when blasting occurs. My name when our consultants are done with this application and they go on to other projects, I will still be a responsive party. My name and number will be available, and I hope that we will be able to maintain a good neighborly relationship with all those around us. I respectfully request that you approve our application, and I'm available for, to answer any questions if you have any.
I have some questions, but Liz, tell me if this belongs in the environmental side of it, but more around the operations, because when I read the environmental impact, it seems that it's led to believe like nothing ever, dust doesn't go anywhere, things come off the barge and it just magically lands where it needs to be and nothing ever goes into the air or anything like that. Having a hard time reconciling that. But can you sort of walk through how it wouldn't be a particular matter, the operations either coming on or leaving on the trucks or and, and in the dust elements as well?
The, the dust regulations indicate that, that uh, under D E P, that no dust particulate should, should be crossing uh, the, the property boundary. We intend to use uh material haulers. That's, that's the statement of the regulation. Um, if you drive down East Avenue, I would believe that you would see uh, dust kicked up from any, any uh, any traveling transport, uh, quite honestly. So we operate, we are willing to install a sprinkler system if needed. We are proposing, we would cover bins. There would be uncovered material when trucks are being loaded and when a material handler is offloading material from the barges. Again, it's virgin material. It is sand and stone. It is, i- it is not a, it, we do not believe it's a source of contamination of any kind. We own and operate at various locations, um, uh, street sweepers. So we could certainly deploy those as needed to contain Smith Street, uh, if there are any concerns about drag out from the site. So we, we are used to operating to minimize, uh, I, I, I don't say it doesn't occur, but to minimize any concerns about particulate matter.
A hard time grasping it. Barge comes in, right? And it has an open claw, comes in, takes it up, drops it in a bucket, right?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a uh, clamshell bucket on a material handler is what we're proposing. It takes it off the barge and places it on the ground, dumps it on the ground. Um, it, we, we, go ahead.
No, no, I just struggle because you have kids and they have clamshell buckets and they pick up sand and they drop it and sand goes everywhere. And I'm just not sure how that's not going to play out here.
Uh, I, I'm sure, as I was going to say with the sandbox, there, there are limited distances to how far any material will travel and, and operating with a bucket at a time, taking off a barge and putting it in a stockpile of material, we do not believe that it is going to be blowing three miles down the river or even three acres past us.
Please, please, um, we're going to insist that nobody interrupt you while you're speaking. Please let other speakers speak without interruption.
Do you have my questions right now?
Well, I have a, a related question, and uh, that is the particulate matter uh, from a fairly significant number of trucks, they're going to be coming to this site. Um, uh, larger vehicles like that traditionally uh are diesel. Uh, and they do put out um particulate matter. Um, is, is there a plan to address that in any way?
We, we post, excuse me, we post no idling signs. We don't expect that there will be a large line of vehicles at any given point. As far as the particulate matter from a truck, we, we do not regulate that that equipment, but we would make every effort, any, any condition that the commission would put on management of vehicles entering and exiting the site. Um, we would certainly consider that. I'm, I'm not sure that's a sufficient answer, but I'm not sure how, how to better answer that question.
Thank you. And can you just reiterate uh your plan to minimize material spillage?
So uh, we're proposing, we, we've dredged at our birth so that the barge can be as close to the, to the uh fendering system as possible. And it's been proposed that we uh put out what's called a, a rubber spill mat whenever material is being unloaded to cover. There is, there is some, sorry, there is some um gap in the fendering system from the bulkhead to the barge itself. So we can lay a rubber mat from land to the barge so that anything that spilled would, would, would be directed back to the barge.
And how often would that have to be replaced?
Or it's, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't get damaged very readily. There, there would be minimal spillage, so it's not a, it's not an item that is worn terribly, terribly quickly.
There any questions uh from uh the members who are online?
I do have a question, just as a, a point of clarification. Um, my, my understanding is that the uh direction materials traveling is from the barge uh to land, you know, eventually to trucks. Um, is there any proposal for uh material to go from trucks onto the site and then onto barge and the barge then out like in the other direction?
We've investigated that possibility with our tenant Savitree. There are options that they are investigating about removing woody material from um landscape debris and taking it to, and taking it to uh an energy reuse uh facility. That's not something that we are capable of at the moment. It, it is something that if we needed to come back to the commission to discuss, we would certainly be willing to do that.
Great. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that was part of this application or not. So it's not part of this application.
I, I'm going to say no.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and I would like to clarify one other item. Uh, the question was raised about parking on site. The, the facility is going to be minimally operated, quite honestly, as far as uh employees. So we are anticipating a, a, an operator for the material handler, an operator for the the bucket loader to load trucks and a scale operator. Three vehicles for employees would easily fit on that site.
I have an unrelated question. I'm curious about the act of Congress regarding the move, movement of the federal channel. Um, just looking at the overhead pictures and my experience going from one end of the Norwalk River to the other, it was always kind of narrow there to start with. So, um, I appreciate what you said about dredging right up to the bulkhead so you could pull the barges all the way in, because I noticed uh across the river, that's not the case. Um, how much of the, how much federal channel is left between your operation and Devon? I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to bag you with that.
No, 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 uh, it's a fair question, and I, I'm sorry that I don't have the page in front of me that, that showed. The, the Chero does, the channel, excuse me, does pinch just, I'll say just behind the Savitree building and across from Divine. So we, um, in part of the discussions, the channel moves closer to the parking lot, and your question is what's the distance? I believe that the, the width channel to, I, I don't want to misstate, so I'm, I'm sorry. If I, if I say that the narrowest point is one hundred feet and we're allowed the unloading portion, and then the discussion was for us to move south anytime that there is a barge, uh, i- that there's two barges berth. So, so that the design of the channel was set so that we
Would, would bringing up a site plan help us here at all?
Uh, it's not drawn on, on the site plan, so I, I apologize for that. I, I can, I can look in my folder and see if I can submit the, the sheet that I have if, if I'll, I'll give it to Attorney Sachi.
Yeah, maybe you can give that to us at a later time.
Certainly.
How long ago was the uh act of Congress?
So the dredging occurred of the Norwalk Federal Channel in two thousand five, two thousand six, and it was within a couple of years of that, or, 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 or was the dredging? Yes, two thousand five was dredging, and so it was within a couple of years of that. Harbor Commission is aware and agrees that that did in fact occur. Um, their, their consultant uh documented the, the, the change in the line and, and showed that at their meeting.
Thank you. Sorry, clarification question. How many trucks are you considering are going to be coming in and out a day?
We're, uh, we were proposing anticipating forty trucks in, forty trucks out. I believe that uh Land Tech looked at, at, for the amount of material, fifty trucks and fifty, fifty in, fifty out.
Are you coming to the site today?
I don't have an answer for that because we are not operating the site for material.
Actually, we go to zero and fifty, okay.
However, let me also point out that again, we are not opening a new market. We are planning to be more efficient in the market that operates. So while a, a traffic study was done and we are looking at it will impact Moody's Lane, Smith Street, Hubble's, Hubble's Lane. How many of those trucks are already on East Avenue moving material that will be picked up closer rather than coming off the highway?
Thank you.
Briefly, I think. Again, for the record, Joel Green for the intervenor. Uh, and I know we're trying to move this along tonight, Chairman, but I just have few questions. Mr. Warren, can you just uh uh, clarify what the site is being used for today? Specific uses and who is using it?
Right now, Savitree is to the north. They are a landscape firm with quite a number of trucks and, and parking area. There is asphalt millings that comes into the site under the operation of Piero paving. Um, he brings millings from local projects and then trucks that off uh to, again, alternative locations use of the mill.
And there's a and you said that the material would be barged in and then uh it would be dropped on the ground basically using this.
Yes, it's, it's, the unloading occurs by, by grabbing the material on the barge, swinging it over onto the land and pla- placing it, dropping it. It depends on how high a pile they're, they're going into.
Thank you. And then it's, then it's pushed into those bins on the ground. Is that correct?
With a material, with a, a bucket loader, yeah.
And so it's your position that there'll only be three employees on site?
Yes.
And it's your position that you won't be bringing in more than, I guess, I'll draw that. Is, is it fair to say that the use of the site would be somewhat elastic based on the volume of business that O N G has built?
I would say yes, but again, we are here looking to codify our right, and if we are restricted in that right, we will operate within given restrictions.
And there's an asphalt plant on the site at the present?
Yes, that is not a piece of this current application.
And is it operational?
It is permitted for operation.
And is it still operated?
It, we have not produced asphalt there in a number of years.
And will there be employees working there at night?
Not, no, not, not for, not for distribution of materials. Um, historically, barge operation has been dependent on tide conditions in various locations. So I cannot say that a barge might not arrive after operating hours.
And what about loading and offloading the barge uh at night?
That would only occur during our daytime operating hours.
And uh, when the barges are, I think to the point about the channel, I just have a question on that. Uh, can you tell the commission about uh slack lines and how they're used with barges?
So uh barges historically are tied with cross lines, and I'm not a mariner, I apologize, and I could probably get better information from the, the, the public here.
Spring lines.
Uh, the, the lines are, are tied at diagonals, at angles to the, the barge, the, or to the uh pins on, on land. The goal is to allow the barge to move with the tide, but stay as close to the bulkhead as possible. Um, obviously during operations, if we are working with uh spill mats, the spill mat would allow uh, would, if there's any movement of the barge, the spill mat would have to cover any opening there. But then when the barge is um unloaded, uh, we would expect it to be tied as tight to the bulkhead as possible.
And, but you, but using those spring lines or slack lines, uh, and we've seen some of the aerial photos, the barges are at times off the uh bulkhead based on a high tide, for example.
I, I won't say no, because it is a possibility.
Fair. And will Piero continue to use the site? Uh, if this application were to be approved, would Piero continue to use the site?
No, with this application, we would expect O N G to take full control of the site.
So with this application, how is the use of the site changing?
In, in my opinion, we are only relocating storage bins and putting in a truck scale.
You're ceasing, you're ceasing the asphalt use, uh, the production of asphalt paving. That's no longer going to occur.
Well, that, that's, that's not a part of what we're looking for. We are, we are bringing in raw material, installing a, a scale so that we can weigh that material and just bringing aggregates on and off site.
And that is the plan. So the aggregate is just temporarily stored on site and then trucked off the site. Is that correct? I have, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions for Mr. Warren?
Um, I do.
Go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you. Um, I missed, I think this question is for Mr. Warren. Could you please tell us how long approximately it would take a barge to go from, say, the Stroffalino Bridge, which, and do they need to raise the bridge for the barge to go? And approximately, how long would it take to get up to the O N G site?
My apologies, that's a valid question that I should have an answer for, and I will need to come back to the commission with that answer. Um, I will need to talk with our, our tug operators. They, they are not, they're not under our control, so it's not a, a number that I have off the top of my head.
Okay, and um, if I may add on to sort of a similar topic, when the barge is coming up the river, I don't want to assume, is it brought with a tugboat and is there one just at the bow or the stern? And when that barge is coming up the river, is there enough space for other watercraft, whether they're motorboats, sailboats, or rowing shells? Can they both navigate in the channel at the same time?
Very good question, and I would say absolutely. Uh, barges are maneuvered with a, generally a single tug with a crew at both the, the bow and stern of the barge. And there is room in the Norwalk River, as has historically occurred, for both recreational vehicles and barge movement to occur. It, it occurs with our neighbor across the street and it can occur for us.
Thank you.
Or across the river.
Believe, uh, a, another question for you. Um, do you know approximately how long it takes to unload a barge? Um, you know, understanding they'd be receiving overnight, potentially start unloading the next morning. Do you have a, a sense of how long that would take to unload?
A barge, depending on the amount of space available on land, a barge could be unloaded within a day's time using the current uh material handler that we're proposing.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Uh, just to be clear, Miss, uh, Mr. Warren, Savitree is going to continue to occupy the portion of the site that it occupies.
Correct.
On the, the north side of the site, the north, the, the building in the north end. Okay, and, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Um, Tom Rider of Land Tech uh was supposed to appear here tonight, but due to the scheduling change resulted in a conflict for him. And if it's, if you would indulge me, I have his statement to read. I can make a, a copy of it available to Mr. Kleppen, read it into the record. He will be available next week if you had further questions of him, but just given the, the fact that this was supposed to commence on the fifth, he's unable to be here tonight, and it was his report that we'd like um to read in. If that's acceptable to you, I'll, I'll read it.
Please, go ahead.
Tom Rider is a certified ecologist, a senior ecologist with Land Tech, who has extensive experience with coastal systems such as tidal wetlands, wetland impact assessments and wetland restoration. The property above the Norwalk River is in, and is within a thousand feet of the coastal boundary, and therefore any onsite activity requires a coastal area management site plan review application. An evaluation was conducted which compared the proposed site activities with the coastal resources and coastal use policies outlined in chapter four, 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 section twenty-two A dash ninety through twenty-two A one twelve of the Connecticut general statutes, which is known as the Coastal Management Act. This evaluation follows the guidelines provided in the Connecticut Coastal Management Manual, prepared by the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to determine if the project is consistent with the act. Proposal: Improve an Existing Yard. Construct Four Material Storage Bin, Bins. Bring Aggregate and Sand to the Site by Barge. Install a Truck Scale and Scale Office Trailer. Improve the Stormwater from the Site by Installing a Water Quality Chamber to improve water being discharged to the Norwalk River. Provide Screening Vegetation Along Smith Street. All Improvements are Proposed Within the Previously Developed Upper Areas of the Property. The property is completely developed with no little, with little natural features remaining. Opportunistic colonizers, including invasive and native species, have established the upper shoreline. A few tidal wetland plants are scattered along the shoreline. No shellfish beds are mapped in this section of the river, and the section of the river, river is characterized as prohibited. The Coastal Management Act established, establishes coastal resources and coastal uses through policies which are consulted to determine if a project is consistent with the act. Coastal Resources On-Site. Coastal Hazard Area. Coastal Resources On-Site. Coastal Hazard Area Number One. Those areas below the hundred-year flood elevation, which this site is elevation ten in GBD. The property is situated at elevation ten or below. Project is consistent with applicable policies, as it does not propose new flood and erosion control structures and does not cause hazards to life and property. Two, Developed Shorefronts. Our engineered harbors, which have drastically changed or developed a natural setting to create bulkheads, seawalls, revetments, et cetera. Not much natural value, but they provide economic value and serve as commercial centers. The project is consistent with applicable policies as the Connecticut area coastal area management act promotes commercial, industrial, and other water-dependent uses which are performed on this property. Three, Coastal Waters and Abeyments. The Norwalk River is in an estuar estuarine abeyment, as it has an open connection to the sound and has freshwater inputs which dilute the saline waters. The project is consistent with applicable policies, as it does not alter the circulation or drainage pattern and does not degrade the water quality of the river or marine populations, i.e. no pathogens, increase in temperature, suspended suspended salas, toxins, toxins, et cetera. Title Wetlands. Five. Property contains scattered tidal vegetation of high-tide bush, ivra fru. Fructexans and salt marsh cordgrass, Spartina alterniflora. The project is consistent with these policies, as the tidal plant populations will not be degraded or disturbed and will continue along the shoreline, nor will the project degrade or alter any fish or wildlife habitat along the shoreline. Coastal Uses. One. Water-Dependent Use. These are uses that require direct access to coastal waters in order to work and therefore must be located on waterfront sites. Connecticut DEP identified the uses of water-dependent use. See email from Marcy Valen of Connecticut DEP, Office of Long Island Sound Program dated March twentieth twenty-four, as it requires water to load and unload water vessels such as barges. Ports and Harbors. The seawall is used to dock barges and to load and unload material. This use is consistent with applicable policies in the same way as specified above for developed shore fronts. Stormwater Management. Project is consistent with these policies as it is improving water that is leaving the site compared to existing conditions, and lastly, vegetated buffers could be added, which would also be consistent with the CAM Act. Adverse Impact is impacts established by the CAM Act. The proposed proposal is consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. Project does not incur any of the adverse impacts outlined in the Connecticut Coastal Management Manual, as it does not degrade water quality, degrade circulation patterns, degrade erosion or drainage patterns through the significant alteration of groundwater flow, degrade natural features of public vistas or viewpoints, increase the hazard of coastal flooding through the alteration of shoreline bathymetry, degrade wildlife, finfish or shellfish habitat, or alter or degrade tidal wetlands, beaches, or rocky shorefronts. Beneficial Impacts. Stormwater will be improved over existing conditions through the implementation of a stormwater management system. The proposed activities improve the use of the property with no impacts to sensitive coastal resources and is consistent with the CT Coastal Management Act. We also provided information in response to comments by zoning staff specifically related to coastal act, and that was part of our memorandum of May twenty-third. Next, I'd like to call on George Andrews of LaRero to discuss environmental concerns, keeping in mind the standards of review for site plan for this application and the standards of review for the Coastal Area Management Act. So if Mr. LaRer, Mr. Andrews.
Just just before you do, are there any questions or comment regarding? The material that Attorney Sachi read into the record? Okay.
Okay, if Mr. Andrews could come on, and I will, he will take stage.
Absolutely. My name is George Andrews. I'm a registered licensed environmental professional and a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I work with LaRero Engineering Associates. We have offices in in Plainville, Connecticut and Broughton, Connecticut. And over my thirty-eight years of practice, I've been involved in a variety of material transfer facilities and and quarry facilities. On my agenda this evening, unfortunately, some of this will be reviewed for you and a repeat of Mr. Warren's presentation, but I'll be talking about dust control, spill control, and noise control. So from a dust control perspective, the applicant is committed to compliance with the regulations of Connecticut State Agencies, twenty-two A one seventy-four eighteen, and specifically, as Mr. Warren indicated, within that regulatory program, there may be no visible particular matter beyond the property line, beyond ambient conditions. So that is a requirement that the applicant that would would certainly be bound by. A little bit of background on the operation. Again, a repeat from Mr. Warren, there's no processing proposed on site. It is clean material that would be delivered to the site, virgin materials, and minimal fines. As mentioned, it's primarily crust stone process aggregate and sand, and that would be washed sand. So there should be minimum fines associated with the materials being delivered to the site. Best Management Practices for Dust Control would include, obviously, sweeping paved areas or hard surfaces. Wetting or treating with calcium fluoride, which is quite common in the industry. Calcium fluoride provides a nice bridge during warm summer experiences like we've had this particular week between waterings. Water misting at the transfer facilities, both transfer from unloading of the barge as well as the transfer at the bins and the transfer into vehicles, haul vehicles. Just to to summarize briefly on on using water and misting. We don't apply water through a water bar in circumstances like this. We use misting nozzles to minimize the amount of water that's necessary for several different reasons. One is it's it's much more effective at adhering to dust particles and and anchoring them and essentially holding them to the surface of the ground. Two, we minimize the amount of water that's that's essentially wasted or lost on the site. And three, we want to avert the creation of any runoff from the operation. So the misting operation creates minimal, if any, runoff whatsoever. And if we do have runoff, that means we're essentially using too much water in the misting process. We would retard that application. Another very important aspect to controlling dust as well as noise on the site is optimizing the traffic flow patterns on the site. You'll see the way the the site plan is set up. The vehicles come in and they're able to get scaled. And then they transition to another portion of the site where they get loaded. And there's adequate room within the heart of the site for a U-turn to be able to access the scale once again if they need to, and a tear isn't on file for them. And then they would exit the site. So obviously, the lack of backing that's required on some smaller sites and the the wetting control that we use and or the salt control on the surface and the control of traffic is very significant in in mitigating airborne dust on the site. Last but not least, all of the stockpiles on the site need to be tarped in accordance with the regulations and the requirements. Spill Control. I know Mr. Warren spoke of this. I can explain the mats a little bit further. The 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 mats are fairly significant. There was a question asked with regard to the longevity of the mats. They're about three quarters of an inch thick, and they're typically either four by eight or eight by eight in size. So it's not something that that a man goes out and lifts. It's something that the machine lifts and places those, and they drape them over the edge of the barge and up onto the onto the pier itself. So they're very rigorous. They're very heavy and very rugged mats. And they're very successful in capturing any escapes that could occur as a result of the the transfer itself. Another item of importance in in spill control is the use of the hydraulic clamshell. Many people who have been in the business for for years and years like myself may be accustomed to cable-operated clamshell buckets and observing the spillage that occurs with that. With the hydraulic clamshell bucket, the bucket is actually forced closed hydraulically. So it's not something that can retain partially open with a lot of spillage. And once again, I'll emphasize something Mr. Warren stated. The last thing in the world this particular applicant wants is the spill material that they've already mined and processed, and they're ready to sell onto the site and then have to pay to dredge that material back out. So any concern with regard to spillage is at the top of the hierarchy associated with this particular applicant. Another component of of spill management is is basic operator training. You'll see the way that the site is actually set up. The crane is set on a slab, and there is a storage facility that the crane would actually pick up from the barge and drop into. So the space between the the barge itself and that bin is quite minimal. In fact, it's approximately fifteen feet. So operator training and maximizing the expedience of running from that barge into the material storage facility is absolutely paramount in mitigating the spill. Last, noise control. Once again, the applicant is committed to two different regulatory programs, the first being Regulations of Connecticut State Agencies twenty-two A sixty-nine, and the second is the Norwalk City Code, Chapter sixty-eight, which was actually submitted to the DEP for review and approval under the previously cited regulation of Connecticut State Agencies. So the both are consistent. So the noise is regulated as a function of the emitter and the receptor, and it's based upon the zones, and that's consistent with with both of the the programs that I mentioned. The facility will be operating during daytime hours as defined in both of the regulatory programs. And as mentioned earlier, anti-idling signs will be the rule throughout the facility. They'll be posted throughout the facility and will be imposed by the scale master. This significantly reduces noise and improves air quality within the vicinity. Heavy equipment operation on the site, loaders, the excavator with the clamshell bucket, et cetera. Backing noise, we would propose to use what what's called white noise backup alarms. It's different than the piercing noise that many are accustomed to on construction sites. It is permitted by OSHA, and white noise noise backup alarms would be implemented on this site for all of the onsite equipment that would be operating. Further, there is significant plantings and also a strong acoustical concrete barrier that surrounds the majority of the site, which is very, very healthy in reducing noise as noise tries to pass beyond the bounds of the property. So the site is essentially equipped with the majority of that, and there's an additional augmentation that's proposed as part of this project. Once again, I mentioned earlier optimization of onsite traffic. The way this site is set up, the trucks are able to enter, get loaded, turn by a U-turn, hit the scale, and exit the site. So it really minimizes efforts, minimizes backing, and minimizes backup alarms on the site. So I think that the site is set up very well to really mitigate noise and also mitigate dust. One other additional component is, I'm sure we're all familiar with triaxle dump trucks using engine brakes. So the site would be equipped with signage that would identify barring the use of what's called jake brakes in the area and certainly within the site. So with that said, I would be more than happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Hi there.
Go ahead, Nick.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I have a lot of questions here, but let's just start at the top here. You you made the claim that no particular matter, no dust, no fumes are going to leave the site. Can you help me understand how once the trucks leave the site, how the exhaust from those trucks aren't going to create fumes? Are them hitting pumps on East Avenue? Won't dislodge dust and particulates into the air?
Yes, the what we typically do on a site like this is we have a a construction exit facility that cleans the the tires of the trucks as they're leaving the the site. So it drops that material down. Sometimes that material is wetted as well, and beyond that, there are street sweeping equipment that is normally operated within the roadway immediately outside of an operation like this. However, the obligation and the optimization is to remove that material before it it leaves the site.
But in your experience, how likely is it that there's still going to be stuff on the truck when you leave the site? The fumes of the diesel truck are still going to be idling, you know, sitting at the red light on East Avenue, still going to be contributing negatively to the environmental impact of the area.
The street sweeping operations.
No, 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 the 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 fifty trucks that are coming in every day, right?
Yeah.
They're going to be stopping at red lights on East Avenue. They're diesel truck. They're emitting fumes at the back of it last time I checked. Right?
Exhaust emissions you're referring to.
Yep. Like, that seems like there's going to be fumes from this project into the area.
But there will certainly be exhaust fumes discharged from the vehicles that come onto the site and leave the site.
Okay, I was just looking at your report five, the contractor's storage yard will not create any fume pollutants, so that's not necessarily true, even what you just said.
There will be exhaust emissions as a result of trucks that come onto the site, operate on the site, and leave the site.
Okay. Thank you.
When when you were speaking about the white noise, were you speaking only about the equipment that's operated by ONG, or were you including those fifty dump trucks a day as well?
I can certainly commit for ONG and the equipment that ONG will be operating on the site itself. Some of those dump trucks may be ONG dump trucks making local deliveries. Some of them may be contractors coming to the site to get loaded for some of their own work over which we would not have control. So there will certainly be some triaxle dump trucks or other dump trucks that will be showing up that may very well have typical piercing alarms as opposed to the white noise alarms. However, the way the site is set up, it is set up such that no backing should be required by any dump trucks that come on the site. There's adequate room within the interior portion of the site for that truck to actually make the U-turn and be able to get loaded and then be able to get scaled out.
Thank you. But on that point, trucks coming into the site that you guys don't have control over necessarily, it's not. You have no way to attest the quality of those trucks coming in, whether or not they have particulates dumping out the back on the wheels from other sites that they've been on earlier in the day theoretically.
Correct. That's fair.
And it's back to your report where a particular matter and dust. I'm just having trouble with some of these facts and how they align with your report that honestly, I found very odious and offensive how like simple it was of like, it's perfect. And it's like, I can't, I just, I'm just really struggling here how rosy it's feeling when when you drive down past any can any site that's doing this sort of work. It's not like. I would almost not believe it more if you said there'd be a little bit than just say there's nothing here.
I'm I'm at a loss because I didn't prepare a report. I'm I'm not sure what you're referring to, and it is difficult to hear you.
Is this? So we've got an environmental impact page. Is that who's mixed that was then?
I believe that that was not prepared by by Mr. Andrews. I believe that was. That was Land Tech. Mr. Mr. Andrews is LaRero.
Oh. Okay. Whomever can talk to that, that would be wonderful.
And that's going to have to be Tom Rider.
Tom Rider.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought we were talking about the environmental impact study, so that's what I was, that's what I had in front of me.
But while we're on that, I do have to remind you that under the site plan requirements and under the Central Business District, there is no requirement or standard that we have to evaluate noise, dust, pollution. You have to look at the CBD zone. The CBD zone is different than the old industrial one and the old industrial two, which had additional. The CBD zone is different than the old industrial one and the old industrial two, which had additional standards for my environmental impact.
We also have to uh, look into. Impact upon adjacent properties, correct?
The safe and orderly development of adjacent properties. We have to abide by the noise ordinance. We have to abide by DEP's requirements for a particulate admission. But as far as an actual environmental study that you saw in connection with the Norden application, it's not required under this app, under the zone in which this property was located. We are doing this to advise you as to what we believe the best management practices would be and what the likely impact would be from the. Material storage on the site and delivery.
Please continue.
We can certainly, we can talk about this with Mr. Ryder further on.
Go ahead, Attorney Green.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Uh, Andrews, just a quick, a couple of quick questions. Do you know, is the entire site going to be paved or is it going to be a paved surface on the entire site? I I understand you're talking about the trucks traveling on the surface. It's not clear to me. It's not clear to me.
Ryan, can you mute whoever's mic please? And just if anybody's online, if you're not asking a question or just keep your microphone muted, please.
I'm sorry, uh, just once again, can you clarify is? On in terms of the travel of trucks on the site, is the entire site going to be paved?
No, uh, the northern part of the site is currently paved and that area would remain paved. Um, there are portions of the southern area that are paved primarily with concrete. The majority of the southern portion is uh, is a um, gravel finish.
So it's very difficult to tell on the site plan, what is gravel and what is concrete and what's paved at the present time? Would you agree?
I, that's where I concluded that from, uh, looking at the site plan and uh, looking at an aerial photograph.
But when you're talking about the northern portion of the site, you're talking about the savatory portion of the site is concrete and paved, is that correct?
That's correct.
So this portion of the site where this operation is proposed is largely open gravel. Surface, is that correct?
Correct.
Dirt. Uh, and in terms of, you said that the activities would only be during the day, that mean, that's no weekends also, there would be not, no activity at all on weekends?
I would defer to Mr. Warren to respond to that. So that I could, we can give you a correct answer.
Well, I appreciate that. Uh, we can get to that with Mr. Warren. Uh, and you also. As I understand it, and I, and just in fairness, you can't commit to. Uh. The percentage of trucks entering and leaving the site, which are actually ONG trucks, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's a complete wildcard, that's variable.
That's variable, correct.
And you have limited control. Off uh, on and off the site of in sort of independent operators, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
And uh. Are you involved at all with other ONG sites? Have you been a consultant as to other operations?
Yes.
And were you involved with the bridgeboard operation, for example?
No.
How about Stanford?
Yes, I was involved in uh, some of the work at Stanford.
And can you tell the commission whether there actually have been issues in Stanford to the best of your knowledge involving dust? Uh, control and the roads around the site?
I can't um, speak to that. The issue that I resolved for ONG and Stanford was specifically related to a concrete facility that they had. And it was a stormwater related issue. It was treatment of stormwater before discharge into the Stanford harbor. Uh, so I I wasn't involved in a capacity of uh, evaluating dust or or um, emissions.
And you heard Attorney Suchi's uh, comments to the commission regarding the fact that this is a site plan review and. The scope of uh, sort of lack of environmental issues on that particular point, did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
But this uh, application also involves a coastal area management application, doesn't it?
Yes.
And that deals with pollutant of coast pollution, can deal with pollution of coastal resources, is that correct?
I believe it, it's certainly does and I'm not part of that component of the application, but it certainly does in other municipalities.
Fair enough, thank you.
Any other questions? Right, if not, uh.
At this point, I would, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, I would like to call Neil Olinsky of SLR. He evaluated the traffic coming to and from the site. Accident patterns, uh, levels of service and also then reviewed the AKRF report um, and the TNP report. So if Mr. Olinsky could come on?
Ryan, can you make him uh, bring him over? Thanks. Yes.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Suchi. For the record. My name is Neil Olinsky and I'm with SLR Consulting. I have approximately nineteen years of experience, transportation. Traffic engineering and transportation planning. And a master's degree in civil engineering from Yukon. And I'm happy to be here tonight. We worked on the update to a prior traffic study we did. Just before the pandemic. Our prior traffic study was done in two thousand and nineteen, early two thousand and twenty. And we recently updated as you, updated it as you've heard a couple of months back. So to begin, um, one of the first things that. We want to know and everybody wants to know when we do. Traffic studies, how much new traffic? Could be. Or is expected or anticipated from any particular project? Oftentimes, we look at. To make estimates like that, we look at statistics that are published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. In what is called the Trip Generation Manual. However, for this traffic study. We did not, because the the. The ITE Trip Generation Manual. Simply does not have any statistics that are exactly relevant to this type of. Um. Development or application in front of you. So what we did instead. Is with ONG, we looked at. Their estimates of monthly aggregate material that is expected to be barged on site and then trucked off. And then we went from there. We looked at um. The the barge capacity. And truck hauling capacity. And then equated that to daily truck traffic. And then. Peak hour truck traffic. So as you've heard, this is expected to have up to eight barges come in a month. To um, place aggregate material at the site. And that would be trucked off. Um, the. There's going to be, or there's expected to be a, a mix of different type of truck, types of trucks, different sized dump trucks. That are expected to haul away material. What we are hearing and what we're estimating is that around half of the trucks. That. Come and go to from the site. Are expected to be your. Sort of typical tri-axle dump trucks that have a hauling capacity of around twenty-two tons. And then the other half are going to be smaller trucks. So we're looking at. About a quarter of the. Truck traffic. To be five to ten ton hauling capacity trucks. And then the remaining quarter to be smaller, two to five ton hauling capacity trucks. So. On a monthly basis. We are estimating with ONG around eight hundred trucks over the course of an entire month. This equates to up to approximately forty trucks per day. On average. Forty trucks during their operational hours from seven AM to around three thirty PM. In our traffic study. We increased this a slight amount to be slightly conservative in our analysis. We, we analyzed fifty trucks per day. During those hours. Um. Furthermore, on a, when we do our traffic studies and typical methodology. For our traffic studies to look at the peak hours of a day to look at traffic flow, potential traffic flow. Imply, implications from developments. So to break that down further. Forty to fifty trucks per day. The busiest hour during the day, weekday that is. Is expected to be in the morning. Say eight to nine in the morning, which might be twenty percent of the daily truck traffic. So. That is approximately ten trucks in and ten trucks out. During your morning peak hour, which is going to be the expected. Highest busiest hour of the day. And then. Generally speaking, the other hours of the day are expected to be relatively even. It's obviously hard to predict and almost really impossible to predict. What's going to happen? In terms of. Specifics. On when trucks are going to come and go, given that this is market driven. But we estimate that during the afternoon peak hour, which. I think we analyzed two thirty to three thirty PM. Approximately. About ten percent of their. Average daily truck traffic. So that's about five trucks entering and five trucks. Exiting during the afternoon peak hour. So that is what we are expecting and analyzing for. Um. For the new traffic. Vehicular traffic to and from the site. As you've heard, the amount of employees is going to be negligible. As well. So I don't know if I could share my screen, but. The next step of our traffic study. Is we look at. The. Routing of trucks. To and from the site. Typical routing. And on figures, four to six of our traffic study. Really sort of uh, quantifies this. On the surrounding uh, street network. So this is your morning peak hour and this is what we're looking at in terms of ten trucks entering and ten trucks. Exiting the site. Traffic studies, by the way. Typically look at. Or focus on off-site. Uh, intersections. Because that's where everybody wants to know, generally speaking, where the traffic impacts. Maybe or may not be. So when you start to break down by direction, ten trips over the course of an hour, those numbers get even smaller. And what we have estimated is that. The majority of the traffic is going to travel via East Avenue truck traffic to get to and from the site. From the south, from the north, as well as some via Park Street. Not much if at any is expected to be, to travel to from the site via Wall Street. And all the entering traffic. I would say the majority of the entering traffic and all of the exiting traffic. From Smith Street is expected to be via the signal, signalized intersection of Hubble's Lane. At East Avenue and Park Street. Some entering traffic from the south. Can't, is actually prohibited from making a left turn at the signal. From East Avenue to Hubble. Instead, that entering traffic from the south. She's only brought approximately four trips that we've analyzed during your morning peak hour. That traffic would be expected to enter via Moody's Lane instead. And then really the third. Step of our traffic analysis, generally speaking, is we look at, well, we model the intersections that we're studying. And we analyze the traffic flows. With. And without. This new traffic, this small amount of new traffic. What we found. Is that this. Amount of new truck traffic is not expected to impact. Or change what is called level, levels of service. At these study intersections, levels of service are sometimes referred to as LO, LOS. It's really a measure of traffic flow, potential traffic congestion and. And really traffic delays. So again, the small amount of new traffic, it's not expected to change traffic, levels of service at these study intersections. Which really means that we're not expecting a traffic flow impact from this application of this project. Another way to look at this as well is ten entering trucks. Ten exiting trucks during the busiest hours, like twenty total trips, twenty one-way trips or ten round trips. Is really only a drop on the bucket when you look at the total amount of East Avenue traffic during that same morning peak hour. During the morning peak hour. We counted only a few months back, approximately one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight vehicles. Using East Avenue, south of the signal. Twenty percent of, or ten plus ten trips, twenty. Divided by seventeen sixty-eight is only one percent. So this ONG traffic. New ONG traffic is only expected to be one percent of the total amount of traffic. Near the site on East Avenue. Um. That is our traffic study in a nutshell. We received review comments from the city's TNP Park Traffic Mobility and Parking Department. As well as from the city's consultant AKRF and. Believe earlier today. Middle of the day, we received another. Uh, batch of of. Uh, re- review comments on our traffic study from SimCo for, I think, the intervenor. We um. We haven't gone through those yet and we don't have um. Responses yet to those, which we're working towards for the next hearing. But that's where we are at with that. Um, what I'm seeing in the review comments is there have been, some things brought up about pre-existing. Traffic conditions off-site. That are really not being caused by ONG. So that's what we're looking at right now and seeing what's, what's what with that. Um. With that, I'm pretty much done and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
How do you consider safety aspect to this? With the amount of trucks coming along on the sides of these trucks?
Sorry, could you repeat yourself? The audio is.
Consider, sorry, can you hear me now?
I can, yes.
In your report, I don't remember if you could just reiterate the safety element of adding these sort of trucks onto the roads and whatnot? In your opinion, like are increasing risk, doing nothing?
That's a very good, very good um, question. That was one of the questions that came up from the AKRF. Review and we're still looking at the, the aspects of that. But I could tell you that at these large intersection of Hubble and Park and East. Today. Prior to any new ONG traffic. There's a fair amount of traffic crashes that occur over the course of a year, as you might expect, obviously not being caused by ONG. And. One type of crash that AKRF has asked about is what is called angle crashes. And what we're looking at when we really dig into the crash data over the past five years is, there have been some, not many, but I think. On the order of. One to two crashes a year that have to do with the left northbound left turn. From East Avenue to East Wall Street. AKRF seems to be perhaps focused on that type of crash, which is only really a fraction of all the crashes. But the point that I want to make now and trying to get at is, we're not adding any. ONG is not adding any trucks to that left turn movement. So it's not. It's not a crash pattern that is expected to be exacerbated by the particular development. So that's at the signal. There um, there's been some questions brought up about the, the width of Moody's Lane. Which we are looking at now. I, again, I don't uh, hold me to this, I haven't measured it. Um. Recently, but I want to say it's around twenty-two feet wide, it's not terribly narrow. But we're going to look further at that. Uh, over the course of the next. And over the course of the next week. The city, by the way, I believe, wants some striping added to that. Leg of Moody's Lane, east of Wall Street, oh, sorry, west of Wall Street, or west of East Street, my mistake. That doesn't doesn't strike me as a problem. Adding striping is is a common sense measure that is uh quite inexpensive.
Other questions from commission members?
I have a quick question.
Please.
Can you hear me okay?
Can, yes.
I'm I'm just wondering, uh it it seems like every application that we have, it it's. A small amount of traffic that's added and it's going to be insignificant. Um we just had one a couple of weeks ago. That's going to generate a hundred and fifty employees and a bunch of trucks on on East Avenue. Is that, are these things kind of cumulatively looked at?
Well, I can't speak to that other project. I don't know the details on that. Um but when the typical methodology for a traffic studies to look at. A development or applications, new traffic or estimating new traffic. With and without new traffic from that single development. Now, it does, we do take into account other area developments and their added traffic, which goes into what is really. Really the baseline or background. Scenario, which is conditions just before you would add this new traffic. We look at. We look at that all, but when you boil it down to, when you boil down to it, traffic study, traffic impact study for development. It's really focused on that particular development's new traffic. And whether that alone will. Impact significantly impact traffic. Flows or traffic safety, and it also comes down to the the particular area, geographic area it's in and the nearby intersections. So it's specific to the area. And every area is a little bit different. So I don't know if I answered your question, but. That was my thought on that.
I have a question, Steve, for you. Uh clearly, we don't, we don't have. Uh answers to several questions, including some traffic questions that we're told we're going to have next week. Uh but we're holding the hearing tonight. Um we may possibly continue it into next week. Um uh i- if we do, then we're dealing with new information. And we have to let uh members of the public speak. To any new information as well as allowing the public to speak this evening. Isn't that correct?
Technically, yes. I mean, I would hope that the applicant can provide answers to pretty basic questions and get that to you tonight.
But it doesn't sound as if we are getting those answers tonight.
Well, with respect to some of the comments that Mr. Malinsky is talking about with regard to Moody's Lane and access, we just received those from the intervenor this afternoon at four o'clock. We can't be expected to analyze that tonight. The in the information and additional questions from AKRF and TNP were received about a week and a half ago. And that information will be provided to you. That's in response in response to your peer review consultant, but the comments from the intervenor. We got it for today, and I don't think it's fair for Mr. Alinsky to be able to be in a position to respond to those specific questions today.
Thank you. Uh are there any further questions? No, if not, thank you.
Thank you.
Just briefly.
Go ahead.
Mr. Alinsky, uh and I and I want to echo Attorney Sachi's comments. She. Uh it's true that the applicant did just receive uh the report from Mr. Monteleone. But we were also responding to the peer review that we just got. So understandably, this has all been a little bit time compressed. And unfortunately, this is where we all are. Uh I just. My my question is, my question is, these assumptions are based on sort of a steady, your your numbers, your estimations. How did you, how did you establish that um the truck trip level?
We look typically at averages when we do our traffic study. Which is pretty standard methodology, especially when you look at things like levels of service, which is really a measure of average delay. But yes, we're looking at averages. Nobody has a crystal ball to say, oh, yeah, you know, the peak hour is really going to be this and it's going to be busier or maybe lighter. On any given day, so we look at averages. And that's what we do.
All right, and I appreciate that, but you did hear the testimony that the demand is elastic based on business demand. And that that would obviously affect the volume numbers that, fair to say.
Um fair in some regards, eight, we again, we looked at eight barges a month, which I think is the maximum. So that is sort of a cap there, so to speak. It could be less than eight barges a month, which would actually reduce our traffic estimates.
Fair enough. And if the commission, depending on what the commission might impose, it could be more than eight barges a month by the same token, correct?
So eight eight is probably a fair s- a fair use of uh. Of what we did for our analysis.
Would it be fair to say that you looked at level of service issues and that so far you have not completed a review of sort of the operational issues? On the use of the access roads, is that fair to say?
Hmm, not quite. We did a full traffic study and we did look at levels of service and all the things like that. So we completed a full review and full study of that. The comments we got and we're still looking at. A lot of a lot of fine tuning types of things to the analysis. Which I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I don't think is going to have. Any ultimate or significant change to our findings. But that's what it's appearing to be. It's a lot of fine tuning to the traffic analysis.
Well, you you commented on the fact that that you saw that there's a some material in the record that the road is only. Hubble Lane is only twenty-two feet wide in some in one location, for example.
Yes, but that doesn't affect things like levels of service that we looked at.
But that affects operational safety potentially, depending on the geometry. Is that correct?
Yes, but I want to also point out that twenty-two feet is not excessively narrow.
Experiment, if I may interrupt, that information was gas of us today. That's not fair. This for attorney green, expect Mr. Alinsky to find on that. It's not.
That's. That's fine, Mr. Chairman. We'll get to it when that information becomes available. And thank you again.
Anything else from Mr. Alinsky?
Nothing.
All right, if not, Bernie Sachi.
That concludes our presentation to you. We look forward to comments from the public. And of course, um I'm sure the commission would would allow us rebuttal whenever that date becomes available. We will provide information and responses to questions the commission has raised, AKRF and uh TNP as well as the interview.
All right, uh we're going to take a that break that I mentioned at the beginning of the hearing. Uh it's eight oh three. No, I will.
I need a ten minutes.
Yeah, we'll we'll get back to, we'll get back together at eight fifteen. We'll give us.
There you go.
Good, okay, wonderful.
We can't hear Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Actually, you'll you'll all be doing most of the talking. We'll we'll be doing listening. Uh we're going to open it up to the public. I'll remind you again, uh number one, please give us your name and your address. And uh to to the extent that you can, keep it as brief as possible. Um while making sure you cover all the points that are important to you. Uh what's important to us? Um are uh questions or comments that go. Uh to the issues that we have to consider. For a a CAM application and a site plan review. Um and I'd ask if if you can be mindful of that uh in your comments. I mean, I understand for many of you. This is, this is a very emotional um issue and um we we certainly appreciate that. Um again, uh uh this is rated uh PG. And again, we'll go between those of you in the audience on the list. Steve, do you have the list?
Uh Larry's going to take care of it.
Okay, and those of you online who uh wish to speak. Uh now, uh I noticed a couple of times you applauded and there was a little bit of noise after a person spoke. Um I I want to remind you that that all takes time. And it means uh that that we're here longer and you're here longer. And um it's not something we can consider in making our decision. So that to the extent we can all just politely listen uh to the speakers. Um we'll we'll do this as quickly and efficiently uh as possible. If it goes too late. Uh we will uh continue the hearing into uh next week and anyone who hasn't had an opportunity to speak will then be given an opportunity. I uh could be wrong. Uh my guess is it will take enough time. Uh so that we will not have an opportunity tonight uh to hear response uh from the applicant. Certainly, if it goes later than ten o'clock. Um we have a couple of minor things that we need to address beyond this. Um and so if it goes beyond ten o'clock, um I think we we certainly won't go much further. Uh with that, um let's uh let's go to the public.
All right, anyone remotely, if you'd like to uh speak, please raise your hand electronically now. The first person we have is Anthony Pava Pavia. Uh please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Um my name is Anthony Pavia. I live at thirty-four Buckingham Place. Um I had an accompanying slideshow. I don't know if that's, I had sent that in earlier. I don't know if that's.
Which one was you?
It was the Google slideshow.
Oh, yeah. Brian, are you able to um bring that up?
Also, before I get started, um at the conclusion of my comments, and I I did email Mr. Klepp and Mr. Baker this. Um I've been asked to um relay comments uh from two other. Uh uh community members that couldn't be here representing two entities. So I, before I start, I want to make sure that that's allowable because.
I think that's all right.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um good evening. My name is Anthony Pavia. I live at thirty-four Buckingham Place, which is directly across East Avenue from Moody's Lane. I am here tonight to speak out loudly and definitively against this application. I am also here tonight speaking as a co-founder and representative of the City Hall Neighborhood Association, which stretches from the Norwok River to Strawberry Hill Road and from I ninety-five West to Morgan Avenue. The association was reconstituted several years ago in response to residents' concerns around East Avenue safety and ways to advocate for the neighborhoods that lie on either side of East Avenue. You may not realize it as you speed down East Avenue to get to the exit sixteen interchange with I ninety-five, or if you're in a hurry to get to Westport Avenue and get some cookies from Stew Leonard's. Or if you live in Cranberry and are trying to get to Cath Pester Beach.
Just slow down.
Sure. It's an East Avenue theme. You may not realize it as you speed down East Avenue to get to the exit sixteen interchange with I ninety-five, or if you're in a hurry to get to Westport Avenue to get to Stew Leonard's to get some cookies. Or if you live in Cranberry and are trying to get to Cath Pester Beach, or even if you're a zoning commission trying to get to City Hall for a meeting. But these neighborhoods are some of the most diverse and vibrant in the city. If you could show slide number two. Um I've included a couple of photos of some of the things that residents on Buckingham Place have to contend with on a daily basis. Um and and encounter. Um you can go to the next slide too, actually. Um the buzzwords thrown around at these zoning meetings, transit-oriented district, infill development, diverse housing stock, mixed use, mixed income. Live to work, live, work, play. This neighborhood literally has all of that. East Avenue has long had a reputation of being one of the most desirable addresses in the city in the mid to late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds to live and work. Today, in the neighborhoods off of East Avenue, you'll find single-family detached homes on smaller plots of land. Duplexes, rentals, condos, co-ops, a thriving commercial corridor, and multiple houses of worship all within this neighborhood. We are home to several mental health providers and are home to the dorm for the Norwok Conservator of the Arts, along with a full-service hotel. What P and Z and the city of Norwok at large seem to work so hard to create all over the city. This application see seeks to single-handedly destroy here. I moved here from New York as a new teacher in the Norwok Public Schools in two thousand and five. Rented in East Norwalk, bought a condo in East Norwalk, married a Norwalk girl, and now own a home and I'm raising a family in this wonderful, diverse, accessible and eclectic neighborhood. City residents, no matter where they call home, deserve safe neighborhood streets. Pedestrians serve deserve to feel safe walking, driving and biking in their neighborhoods with their families. And businesses should be able to have their customers easily and safely access their places of business. Local houses of worship should be able to have their congregations safely transit to and from religious services. If Norwok residents find that these simple rights are no longer given, they deserve transparency in a way to be heard in a process that gives them equitable chance to make their case. City government should be working as hard for local residents as it does for large corporations and large businesses to establish quality of life that's fair to everybody. This application before you benefits no one except the applicant at the expense of the neighborhood surrounding it. The flaws in this application are so many that it's hard to concisely put into words. From traffic and safety concerns and how the site will handle the forty to sixty triaxal dump trucks every day, adding to an already congested and dangerous East Avenue corridor. To the environmental concerns regarding the river and air pollution, to the safety of the rowing communities on the river. To questions around access for the boating community and the process by which this application went through the Harbor Commission. This application deserves careful contextualization and proper discernment by all parties affected. The commission and applicant have been receiving letters of opposition from the community, and you will hear from those stakeholders tonight. And if I could take a moment and ask all those stakeholders in attendance here tonight in opposition to the plan to this application to please stand up. To say that there is broad-based opposition might not be strongly enough put. Letters of opposition have been submitted from entities such as the Norwok Land Trust, First Taxing District, which actually owns the Norwok Green. The Human Services Council, multiple rowing associations, several houses of worship and faith communities on East Avenue, along with city council members and the Norwok River Watershed Association. I'd like to be crystal clear on a couple of points because the applicant has not been. First, regardless of what the regardless of what city permitting body ONG has been in front of pitching this plan and how they have described it. The site has been dormant since approximately two thousand and eight. You will hear residents' testimony who have lived adjacent to the site speak on this. And there have been several letters received by the applicant applicant from residents that have stated this. Secondly, ONG is not a good neighbor. You have heard via letters and will hear from residents who live adjacent to this site, well, while it was active and since it has been dormant, that residents have been subjected to an unkept site. With litter and weeds and dumping becoming issues as far back as two thousand and nineteen. Piles of debris are not tarped and still aren't, allowing dust and dirt to migrate fully off-site. Residents have sent letters and tried to contact ONG at Noah Vale, and there have been documented calls to the Norwok Customer Service uh line about this site. Only after their last meeting in front of this commission, when a commissioner asked to walk the site, did the weeds and trash magically disappear. Also, in stark contrast to another recent highly controversial zoning application at the Norton property where that applicant actually met with neighbors. Matt O'Neglia and ONG have not offered to meet with any neighboring residents or businesses. Their silence speaks volumes. As this application has run its way through this process, the site has been called everything from a contract yard to a material to a material storage site, to materials manufacturing site, to materials processing site. It has all depended upon which applicant, uh whom the applicant was in front of at the time. What has been consistent is the absence of a promise to not restart the asphalt production, which you heard tonight, or put a hard cap on the number of barges. In their latest response to this commission, they essentially say that while they don't seek to create a market, they will simply respond to demand. So while they now say eight barges, it started with twelve, what's to say that the market doesn't necessitate fifteen barges? Fun fact, in viewing the ONG website, every one of their locations in Connecticut is listed except for Norwalk. If this site has been continuously operating for the last decade, why is it not listed on their website? In looking at how ONG has pitched their plan to various permitting bodies, they repeatedly stated they are taking truck traffic off of ninety-five by using barges to bring materials in. by using barges to bring materials in, as if they are doing us as a city a favor. ONG's customers will be contractors from the area, but not necessarily from Norwalk. So once again, central Norwalk is being made to carry the burden of now being a materials depot for the surrounding towns to the benefit of people that don't even live here. You can go to slides three and four. Actually, there's a, that's a video. The, the slide, the slide on the left is a video. Is that, you, you able to play that? No, could you go back one? I'm sorry. The, the dump truck there, um, that is the intersection of Buckingham Place and East Avenue, and Moody's Lane is offset to the right. That's a Piro paving truck trying to navigate traffic, and I actually filmed it trying to navigate the traffic. If you're able to play it, I don't know who's running the slideshow. But I mean, this is, this is a good example of what we have to look forward to from ONG's proposal. Um, the truck did take the turn, stopped traffic on East Avenue heading toward ninety-five completely. Um, we're going to see that forty to fifty times a day. Can't wait. You can, you can move it to, to the next slide if you could. Or not. That's okay. I'll, I'll talk and maybe it'll come back up. The ONG site is located on Smith Street. Yeah, if you can advance it one. I'll keep talking. Perfect, thank you. The ONG site is located on Smith Street. For those that aren't aware, this is, they're already, our industrial use is present there. Sabre Tree with roughly twenty-five to thirty large trucks, a large warehouse home to an insulation company with four to six box trucks, and multiple landscape construction companies that are already located there. Smith Street itself starts on a steep hill where it meets Moody's Lane, winds down to the river, and is parallel to the ONG site, uh, which does not have sidewalks, by the way. Runs past the OJL and the DPW born, which have been painstakingly restored, uh, and passes the Sabre Tree property. I have included pictures of the conditions on Wednesday, June nineteenth. You can see there is no sidewalk on either side of Smith Street. There is a warehouse, if you can advance it one more slide, I'm sorry. There is a warehouse, thank you, uh, that has the insulation company loading bays that front right on Smith Street. To say that this street is pedestrian unfriendly is an understatement. To imagine triaxial dump trucks transiting past each other or even past a small sedan is insane. Uh, if you can move it one more slide ahead. A major concern of the neighborhood is pedestrian safety, bike safety, and vehicle safety. East Avenue has become a major thoroughfare across the city, and it's a route that's prone to speed and accidents and serves everyone except the people who live on or around it. While the applicant's traffic study and the city's subsequent peer review looked at East Avenue from Moody's Lane to Hubbellane, it's impossible not to zoom out and look at the entire corridor from Exit sixteen to Westport Avenue. Because once the trucks leave the study area, they don't just vanish. If you could advance the slide one more. I have the data from the Connecticut Crash Data Repository out of Yukon. Uh, it's displayed here. In the last three years, from Exit sixteen to Westport Avenue, there have been fifty-eight total crashes with a hundred, involving a hundred and sixteen vehicles and a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-two people involved. These are big numbers, and the addition of roughly nine thousand truck trips a year won't make that number go down. In partnership with the Norwalk Green Association, our neighborhood group has worked extremely hard over the past several years to present documented resident feedback to several city departments in an attempt to provide pedestrian safety solutions for our neighborhood to Noah Vale. We have, in the past, presented signatures of over a hundred neighborhood residents asking the city to start planning to address East Avenue. Partial funding was received from the study, but the other half of the funding was cut in the most recent budget. We again are pleading for the city to take an interest in our neighborhood. This application highlights an already unsustainable situation for residents along or on East Avenue and the consequential damage that will be created by intense level of commercial trucking. Can advance the slide one more. The solution to the above issue lies with the data, and it all begs for a smart, ecological combination of infrastructure improvements and smart zoning decisions. City Hall Neighborhood Association hopes that, as a result of the significant shortcomings of this, shortcomings of this application that I have highlighted here, and that will be highlighted by the testimony and feedback giving after me, that this application is denied. While we recognize that ONG has a right to use the property, they don't have a right to negatively impact our neighborhood and our quality of life. Additionally, we hope that we have called the commission's attention to the issues that exist in our neighborhood and that pedestrian vehicle safety measures can be further discussed as a part of an equitable and transparent process that finally benefits our community on or around East Avenue, in both this application and any applications that follow it. Communities thrive when residents and local governments collaborate and work together to achieve outcomes that benefit everybody. Good governance occurs when local communities work with municipalities to use data-driven solutions and ongoing public engagement to solve problems residents encounter on a daily basis. It is my hope that that happens here. Thank you for your time and attention in this important matter.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to read a brief statement from Lisa Shanahan and Louise Wosher uh, from the Norwalk River Watershed Association and the Norwalk Land Trust. The Norwalk River, the Norwalk River Watershed Association and Norwalk Land Trust oppose the permitting of the proposed expanded uses at the site because of the threats that uses, that use poses to water quality and the health of the harbor as outlined in the joint letter that NRWA and NLT signed on April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you.
Roger Shields, you are next, if you can unmute.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you very much. Uh, you should be seeing a photograph I posted as opposed to a photograph of me. I guess not.
No, we, we're, we're seeing it.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, Mr. Shulman. Uh, first off, I want to thank all the commission members. Thank you for volunteering your time and listening to all of our concerns. My name is Roger Shields. I live at thirty-one Plymouth Avenue, Norwalk, and I've been a property owner since nineteen eighty-eight in Norwalk. I will try to be shortened to the point. Uh, the photograph, aerial photograph I'm displaying is taken July ten, two thousand and eight. Uh, it can be found on Yukon Online's archives. And this was taken a random day during the last year, as we understand it, that ONG operated with barges at seven fifty-five Smith Street. I wish to emphasize, the photograph clearly shows that the federal navigation is completely blocked by barge at ONG, bulkhead in the same position as their proposing barges to be located, preventing the safe navigation of even small rowboats. In the original full-size photograph, there is no sign of a tugboat indicating that the long duration of this, uh, the long duration of the blockage that this barge, uh, created. Uh, I consider this a detriment to the public resource. This is the same time, I understand, based upon Norwalk Harbage Management Committee's recorded meeting of May twenty-five, during the same time during which ONG operated under a verbal agreement of some type to keep the channel open. The same insurance that ONG gives again for purposes of this application. Additional random aerial photographs from prior years shows much the same, though this two thousand and eight example shows complete blockage. As, uh, Mr. Warren, the Vice President of ONG, I believe, he stated, "They do not control the barge handling." In essence, the barge handlers choose the size of barge, the width of the barge, where the barge is going to be tied up, how it's going to be tied up, and, uh, the duration of blockage of that barge is going to be determined about by when the, uh, barge company delivers and removes the barges from the bulkhead. On March twentieth, Connecticut DEEP, DEEP confirmed, affirmed that ONG met the basic guidelines for CCMA purposes. However, in an April four, two thousand and twenty-four memo to Norwalk Planning and Zoning, Marcy Bayland, uh, DMP, uh, DEEP, quote, encouraged, close quote, Norwalk Planning and Zoning to, quote, "evaluate and seek information further on these concerns," close quote, regarding interrupting boat traffic on Wall Street. I myself researched the Yukon photographs and submitted a letter to Planning and Zoning with additional photographs that show the river from nineteen thirty-four up through two thousand and eight in its various stages of development. I encourage the, uh, Planning and Zoning to take Marcy's request seriously. One last point, and it was with regards to the spill mats. And the eight-by-eight mat, that's really not large enough when you consider that the tidal rise and fall is seven to nine feet. That's in all the harbors in Long Island Sound. If a mat is placed between the shore and the barge, that mat will not cover the gap. So with that, I thank you for your time and appreciate you listening to my comments.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have Todd Bryant.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Todd Bryant, twenty-three Morgan Avenue, Norwalk, and I've lived there since nineteen eighty-six, which means that I lived there when this was an active, uh, asphalt plant. I live about a quarter of a mile, according to Google Earth, from this site. And to tell you how close that really is, I used to run that in less than a minute in high school. It was a long time ago, but, uh, it's, it was loud. I gotta tell you, it was loud and it stank. Now, they say they're not going to use an, uh, uh, do it as an asphalt plant anymore. Okay, well, I'll believe that. But they're still going to be taking material, sand and gravel out of a barge, putting it, storing it on the site, and then dropping it into dump trucks. I find it hard to believe they can do that quietly. This, this, and it will disrupt the entire neighborhood. Uh, this, this is a real issue for all of us, I believe. And, uh, not to mention the fact, I mean, they would say that there's not going to be any particulate, there's not going to be any, any, anything in the air, no, no pollution, but, you know, who, who knows? There are experts that can speak to that better than I can. The other thing that, that occurs to me is that, um, this, there are two immediately adjacent National Register Historic Districts. The Norwalk Green Historic District and the Wall Street Historic District. Uh, now, I, the traffic, the, the traffic analysis guy said, oh, no, nobody's going to go down Wall Street. And then later on, someone, uh, possibly the same person said, well, yeah, you know, only a few of these dump trucks are going to be from ONG, and the rest are going to be from outside contractors, and we can't control what they do. So that will tell you something else. So the businesses on Wall Street, the residences, the new residences that are about to be finished, we hope, and on Wall Street, uh, the residents around the green, you've already heard more about that, um, will be affected by this, by these, by the traffic that will be generated from this site. Um, and, uh, it, it, it's definitely, not to mention the fact that, and Mr. Pavia spoke about this quite eloquently. Anybody who's tried to navigate that, uh, interesting intersection at the end of the green where East Avenue, uh, uh, East Wall Street, Morgan Avenue, uh, everything comes together, and those trucks will be going through that intersection. It's bad now, it's going to be worse then. So all of these things put together would lead, you know, makes me think that this is a bad idea to reactivate this site. I could probably go on, but there's no point. Others will cover more, more aspects of this issue. But I think the traffic and the, and the impact on the historic districts, uh, the impact on Mill Hill, the Norwalk Historical Society, uh, facility there at Mill Hill is going to be really direct. Uh, any traffic going around the green, um, all of those things, it's all, they're all negatives, and none of those things, uh, improve Norwalk. We're no longer an industrial city. We're a city of offices, residences, and the businesses that support those things. So this is really a step back in Norwalk's history to approve this reuse of this site as an industrial facility. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sue Powers. And after Sue, we have Ryan Raphael, and then Brad Craighead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Sue Powers. I'm speaking on behalf of the Norwalk Boat Club, which is located at eleven Wall Street.
I'm sorry, I'm having, I'm having difficulty hearing you.
Okay, is that better? Uh, my name is Sue Powers, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Norwalk Boat Club, which is located at eleven Wall Street. I have submitted a more complete letter to the commission earlier today, and it should be on file. Um, but I wanted to speak today about our club. Um, our club is at the north end of the harbor, is the farthest north that you can navigate the river by boat, as there is a federal navigation channel there that runs all the way to Wall Street. This allows our boaters to get to the Long Island Sound and return. The Norwalk Boat Club has been at this location for one hundred and twelve years, survived the flood of nineteen fifty-five and rebuilt. Is one of the oldest clubs in Norwalk, serving generations of Norwalk families. We take great pride in keeping the river clean, amassing hundreds of pounds of garbage annually to avoid it from reaching the sound, especially after major rainstorms and snow melts, as the sometimes staggering amount of debris that comes down the river all accumulates here. Imagine our surprise one day in April, when we heard by rumor that ONG was applying to reopen the plant along the river directly across from currently operating facility at the same, of the same nature. Uh, incidentally, um, none of the marinas, boat clubs, rowing clubs were notified of this pending action by the applicant. Um, as you can see in the picture, um, the current situation on the river, um, is, is not a great one. Um, there is a company currently there doing this business with barges. Uh, we have a heck of a time navigating around what is currently there and bringing in uh, of side-by-side barge, um, would leave no channel. Um, so the barges are there three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I haven't heard anything about when the barges leave. Um, all I've heard about is they come and as far as what we've witnessed from the other company, they stay there until a new full barge arrives, and they're just swapped out. So they're constantly there. Um, so explain how a second set of barges on the Smith Street side will allow for a federal navigation channel for other vessels. Uh, how are we going to share the waters when we don't have any water left? Blocking the channel would be a violation, I would assume, um, because it's unsafe to block a federal national, uh, navigation channel. I'm concerned about the severe consequences approving this application could create boater safety should be paramount. Um, I'm going to refer to Ryan, our Marina Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Ryan Raphael, and I'm also here representing Norwalk Boat Club, uh, located at eleven Wall Street. Um, I'm here because we have several, several concerns about the application that's being submitted by ONG. Um, as other people have noted, um, none of us had received any official notification at Norwalk Boat, Boat Club of this application. We all heard tonight the, the words "good neighbors" being used. If ONG was standing on the shoreline of the property in question, and they turned their head slightly to the right, two hundred feet away, they would see the Norwalk Boat Club, and I would think it would prompt them to say. And I would think it would prompt them to say, the, this company could be impacted by the actions that we're proposing here. Moving forward, the uh, the part that's more concerning to me is the actual site plan diagrams that have been submitted. If we look at these plans, there's not really one bit of truth that's placed within them. The diagram, the only thing that's truthful in this diagram is that there is a hundred and ten feet from shoreline to shoreline in between ONG's site and Divine's. In these plans, they've laid out barges that are thirty-five feet wide on either side of the river. That's not factual either. If you go down and look today at Divine's area, the barges that they have are forty-five feet wide or larger. Okay? We've heard the term slack line, slack lines used tonight. Slack lines are used on these barges because they're fixed to um, land that does not move with the tide. So they have to add an additional ten feet of line to the side of the boat so that it can float up and down with the tides. So even a thirty-five foot barge with a ten foot slack line is now going to require, take up forty-five feet of space, where these diagrams are showing, it's sitting up against the shoreline directly without any, uh, without any consideration of that slack line. If ONG were to bring in barges that were greater than thirty-five feet, such as Divine, and you had two barges on either side that were forty-five feet wide, that's taking up already ninety feet of the hundred and ten that's available. You add in the slack line to both the sides of the river, ten feet, that's twenty more feet, that's a hundred and ten feet. That closes the channel. Our boat club consists of a, a number of, of uh, members who have boats as well as members who don't have boats. If our members can't get their boats in and out of the marina, they're going to have to go and become members somewhere else. The marina is the lifeblood of our club. Closing off that channel would absolutely kill this club. And this club has been uh, in operation for over a hundred and ten years. We are the oldest club, boat club on the river. Additionally, we do have concerns about flooding. Uh, any of you that have walked past the Wall Street area after a major rainstorm can see how fast the water is moving through the tributaries that are on either side of the boat club. That water needs to flow somewhere. Right now, there's about a sixty-foot opening between Divine's barges and the uh, the other edge of the shore where ONG's property resides. The water's able to flow through there. If you put another thirty-five or forty-five foot barge in that area, it's going to be a huge wall, leaving either ten feet or no feet for water to uh, flow through. And what is it going to happen? It's going to dam up and it's going to end up flooding the boat club. It's going to end up flooding all the residences around that area as well. As far as uh, this application, we would request that ONG involve the Army Corps of Engineers to review this application and to review the site plan to give their input as far as how feasible it is and the impacts that it's going to have on the channel and the use of that channel. We'd also ask that there be official documentation and standardization around how these barges will be managed. Um, you know, we heard from Mr. Warner tonight that they weren't willing to work with Divine on how they would bring in barges, but nothing's being documented. Years and years ago, supposedly there was a gentleman's handshake, if you will, on how that would be managed. Nobody can find any documentation that states that they would not, neither of them would have barges in there at the same time. So I would propose that they have some sort of official documentation, plan, um, and as uh, uh, an identified source who's going to regulate that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Roman is next. If anyone remotely would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically.
Um, hello, commission. My name's Roman Vendaroski. I'm, I live at a hundred Gillies Lane here in Norwalk. Um, I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Maritime Rowing Club. And um, if you allow me, I will also read a statement from our fellow club, um, Connecticut Boat Club. That's also here on the Norwalk River, um, as well after I speak.
That would be fine.
Thank you. Um, so Maritime Rowing Club is located, uh, uh, three Jennings Place, uh, north, uh, west, I'm sorry, southwest of the ONG plant. And uh, we've been continuously operating, uh, here on the Norwalk River for twenty-eight years. Um, we roughly have about five hundred members go through our facilities on a yearly basis and we provide um, uh, access to the river for kids anywhere from middle school to high school age, um, younger rowers. And we have about seventy adults, uh, that row every day on the river. Um, we have in the past experienced barges, uh, utilizing the upper harbor and the Norwalk River. And uh, the proposed increased barge traffic on the Norwalk River will be uh, extremely detrimental, um, to the safety of all recreational, uh, boaters and rowers uh, on the Norwalk River. These barges are extremely big and once they enter through, uh, the railroad bridge onto the river, it's very hard for them to maneuver. Uh, it's extremely hard for them also to stop in case of emergency. Sometimes it could take over two hundred feet. Um, so our, our biggest concern is these barges, um, are regulated by the tides on the Norwalk River. And so when they do enter, uh, the river at certain times, it's at the peak recreational use times on the Norwalk River. Once they enter the river, it is impossible to utilize the river in a safe uh, manner. A lot of the rowing ships are not easily maneuverable and they're operated by younger kids. And so it, once the barges, uh, enter, we'd have to either not be on the river or be completely off to the side, um, so they can pass. Um, so, um, we're, we're asking the commission to consider, uh, not only, uh, the neighborhood impact and the local roadways, but also, uh, recommend to the harbor management commission that it oversee again and, and ask more questions about the safety, uh, of these barges and how they operate, um, on the river. So I'm also going to, uh, read a statement from Jim Schweitzer, uh, from Connecticut Boat Club, uh, twenty-three Platte Street and Oyster Ben Marina. Um, both of our comments also were submitted this morning through letters, so they should be a part of, of the file as well. Uh, so Connecticut Boat Club is located twenty-three Platte Street at Oyster Ben Marina and Jim is writing to express grave concerns over the safety aspects of the bridge use and its impact on the rowing community on the Norwalk River. Um, I expressed these very same concerns to the harbor management commission on an April twenty-three, uh, twenty-four memo on which you are, uh, copied. I cannot attend the hearing to, today and have given permission to Roman, uh, for Maritime to read the statement. CBC has been op, operating from Oyster Ben Marina since twenty-ten and have been rowing and coaching on the river since two thousand. Many of the comments surrounding the application state a continual operation since two thousand and ten. There has been no activity at the sites surrounding barge deliveries. This is a fact. On any given day, generally mornings and mid, later, uh, late afternoons, there's approximately two hundred to two hundred and fifty junior rowers, high school aged, and about seventy-five adult rowers that use the river for rowing. Our concern is very simple, the safety around the barge use. While, uh, we see in the application many plans around the traffic environment, et cetera, there is not a single reference to any plan, um, concerning barges. I have shared and would be happy to share with P and Z Commission two brief videos of the barges on the river in the typical afternoon rowing practice. The potential safety issues are self-evident. Um, I do not understand how the harbor management commission approved the application lacking these basic information. Part of their character is to ensure the safe use of the harbor and all of the boaters. The safety plan would, uh, would be a basic requirement to evaluate before approval, but that is... Be it, okay, sorry, can't see. Uh, B, that is made, we are asking P, P and Z before moving to an application to have ONG submit their plan for safety and logistical operations concerning barges and its impact on the rowing community, not to mention the construction activity, uh, at the Wath Bridge, um, that is currently happening. I would think the P and Z would want to consider this portion of, uh, ONG application and be satisfied that all aspects of operation are conducted in the same manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Diane Cece. Go ahead, Diane.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good evening, uh, commissioners and, um, and staff. This is Diane Cece, thirty-seven Olmstead Place in East Norwalk. I'm speaking tonight, um, not only as a resident, but at my capacity as president of the East Norwalk Neighborhood Association. Um, I'm sorry that I didn't prepare a formal statement or submit anything to you. I didn't have time to do that, but I'm here tonight to speak in support of our sister association across the highway, the City Hall Neighborhood Association, um, and also the Norwalk Green Association, um, in their efforts to, um, provide expert testimony and compelling public testimony to deny this application. Um, one of the things that I want to note, not just for your benefit commissioners, because you already know this, but also for the members of the public in the audience and listening at home, is that it, it, people paying attention to this will know that had this been a special permit under the zoning regulations, um, which today it would be, but when this was filed, it's not. Um, there's no doubt in my mind that you would be denying this application based on everything you know about it. The fact that it's a special, it's, that it's a site plan review, um, only exists because that's how, uh, the prior rewrite of the zoning went through. And I want to say that this is the price that we pay, um, as a community, when we're not taking the time to vet the, the consequences of the zoning regulations. And, uh, whenever we're seeing site plan review, um, it leaves a community at risk for not having the tools available, um, to be able to provide you to protect the community from undesirable uses. Um, in this case as well, under the site plan review, um, be, because this wouldn't have been a site plan review if, if it was put in now because it would be a special permit. But I believe that it would have been a special permit prior to being changed to the, uh, Business Development Zone or whatever the, the prior one was. And so when those changes go through and the commission and the public is looking at something called a materials, um, processing plant or storage and distribution facility, again, this has had several iterations, um, very often you're told, well, um, this really isn't that bad of, of a use for an industry that's on the river. And, uh, the chances of someone coming in and applying for this use are remote. And you will hear people like me all the time warn you that every minute you allow these uses under site plan review to remain on our books is another minute that this community is subject to an application coming in. And then our hands are tied. It's virtually, um, impossible to try to beat these back based on what the standards are. Mr. Kleppen and attorney such, you're going to remind you over and over again that under this review, if it meets the technical requirements of the regulation, you are legally bound to approve it. And so we have to trust them that it's coming through staff and staff is, uh, would have vetted this very well before, um, advancing it to the commission. Uh, they, they, there's no way that they're going to advance something to you where they know there's either a technical flaw or that the, uh, the regulation isn't being, uh, the requirement in the regulation isn't being met. And so, but, but here's the thing with this application, and this may be different than our communities now gone through with Norton, and I, I don't really want to harp on that, but I want to just point out a difference here. The, when you take a look at site cam review, I think that you want to remember that there are several of the thirteen special permit conditions under which you can consider the factors and you can vote to deny this. Most importantly, the traffic, noise, environmental and traffic impacts. And as I'm sitting here and listening to this, I'm thinking to myself, you don't really need opposition expert testimony to convince you that those four impacts alone on the community, not just within the neighborhood, but on our whole community, um, are going to be, uh, uh, they're just obvious. You, you don't need experts to go back and counter, uh, whether or not the traffic engineers that the applicant use IPE standards that they use averages. Um, if they're talking about fine particular dust or they're talking about, you know, something else that they're qualifying, you know, with some other name. It should be obvious when you're talking about, um, that type of material coming off of a barge, you're not going to only have noise, you're going to have dust, you're going to have environmental impact. It should be obvious without looking at anything related to traffic that when you have forty trucks a day, based on the, the barges, that, and, and really, by the way, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the forty trucks a day, um, is forty truckloads related to the, the, the materials on the barge. So that actually means eighty truck trips a day, because the trucks are coming in and they're going out. Okay, whether they're ONG trucks or not. Um, and then when it comes to, to the, to the actual traffic impact, I believe that the applicant's traffic, um, engineer, um, was saying that, or tried to explain away the fact that they may not have taken into account, uh, not only the build out, but also the, um, the, uh, currently approved future uses along this corridor that would impact traffic. And I, I wonder if, um, if everything is in there, it's like Cemetery Street, um, the, the future potential expansion of the East Norwalk, uh, train station, um, DOB development, um, along East Avenue. And I realize that Norton was just approved, but I think that that should be taken into account as well, um, since they haven't managed to even get in all their traffic information yet. Um, so what I, what I really want to say is that first of all, that East Norwalk Neighborhood Association, um, opposes this. We are, uh, in support of City Hall Neighborhood Association and the Norwalk Green Association in their opposition to this. Uh, we, we hope that, that you will side with the community and take into account the, uh, the factors here that you are legally allowed to take into account and, um, conclude as most reasonable mere mortals, like we all do, conclude that, that this is not a good application for this community and that it should be denied. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Uh, my name is Brad Craighead. Um, right, you've got that up there. Um, I did, so I sent this on to, uh, the zoning commission planning zoning earlier today. Um, I'm a property owner. Uh, ninety-six East Avenue is one of the relevant properties that's affected by this application, but the reality is, that's not why I'm here. Um, yeah, I'm a property owner. Yeah, this destructs value, but it really bothers me because it's wrong for Norwalk. Um, when I heard about this with my colleague, Anthony Pavia, from City Hall Neighborhood Association, we were stunned that this, kind of our worst nightmare, was actually a real possibility. Unfortunately, um, our nightmare could actually come true. Um, I'm just going to read what I wrote earlier today. Um, it won't take that much time. There's a lot here and I think this will sort of conclude the, uh, the references to the river. And I think that the rest of the group here, the way that I look at this is, the fundamental problem from a community perspective is, it starts with what comes into Norwalk and up the river. Goes on to Smith Street and then it's trucked out through the neighborhood. So I have a list here of ten things that I'd like you to look at while I'm reading my, I suppose, testimony. And the name of my little presentation here is value destruction and the impact on Norwalk's community. And by the way, thank you Diane Cece for pointing out the differences, the subtleties for many of us between a site plan review and a special permit. It certainly sounds like much of that criteria applies here, although... although I understand that the hurdle is lower for an approval from the applicant. Nonetheless, let me just begin. So my name is Brad Craighead, and I'm the owner of six properties in the Norwalk Green Historic District. That includes ninety-six East Avenue.
I, I apologize, Craig. Can you give us your address, please?
I live at twenty Mill River Road in South Salem, New York.
That's fine.
I'm a non-resident property owner. I'm not a voter either, but I am a significant taxpayer. I can assure you that. Which is actually one of the points that I'm going to make, that I think you all will find pretty interesting, if not shocking. I'm also a founder of the Norwalk Green Association, whose membership includes the First Congregational Church, St. Paul's in the Green, and Mill Hill Historic Park. In this regard, I want to register my opposition to the application filed by ONG, seven dash fifty-five Smith Street, to open what I understand now is a materials processing, but maybe perhaps no longer a manufacturing operation. You know, we didn't know until this evening what they're proposing to do. And we'll find out whether that's expanded. Nonetheless, ONG has stated intention to bring eight to twelve barges up the Norwalk River every month. All depends how big the barges is or are, doesn't it? Right? That's something that I didn't know, consider, think about, but I've heard through others and learned that these barges actually never leave. You want to bring up the same material, you just have eight barges that are bigger or twelve barges that are smaller and narrower to preserve the federal channel. That's how the game's played. Nonetheless, eight to twelve barges up the Norwalk River every month represents an unprecedented level of barge activity from a site that has been inactive since two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight. This would generate a never-ending stampede of approximately ninety-six hundred triaxle dump trucks per year through the Norwalk Green Historic District, the city's iconic and symbolic center, dispersing in all directions through the residential streets of Norwalk. We learned earlier that that actually could be a thousand dump trucks a month. It was eight hundred is the written, I think it was eight hundred in the traffic report. Now it could be a thousand. Who knows? It's a shocking, it's, it's a stunning number. Based upon my own personal experience and as the owner and manager of six properties that provide housing and jobs for approximately seventy-five people, they're all located along the truck routes, namely Park Street and East Avenue, that are identified in the applicant's traffic report. This unprecedented level of commercial trucking, in my opinion, would significantly and negatively impact the personal safety and quality of life of these and other residents in the neighborhood throughout the extensive network of truck routes beyond the immediate area and across Norwalk. To state the obvious, heavy commercial trucks are proven to be extremely dangerous relative to cars with a far, far higher associated fatality rate and emit pollutants and noise that are extremely disruptive and in conflict with the increasingly residential, this increasing residential neighborhood. In fact, with the highest concentration of houses of worship in Norwalk, Father Daniel representing the, the Houses of Worship and close to a dozen preschools, all of the Houses of Worship have their own preschools, educational training facilities, nonprofits, childcare centers. The neighborhood immediately surrounding the ONG site on Smith Street is one of the city's highest and most densely populated diverse areas that provides and attracts jobs, housing, community building, and visitors. As we all know, if approved, this volume of barges, when combined with Divine Brothers' ongoing barge traffic, will disrupt or displace an estimated two hundred and fifty to three hundred rowers representing three rowing clubs that navigate up and down the Norwalk River year round. One of my daughters is a rower. They work out twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. Additionally, there are at least eight recreational boatyards, marinas, and docking facilities stationed along the Norwalk River, all located north of Water Street. Sourcing information from the various marina and boat club owners and supplemented by aerial photographs, I calculated that there are approximately two hundred and fifty taxpaying boat slips in place set to provide access for recreational use by hundreds of boaters, their families and friends, all of which would be significantly impacted by the unprecedented volume and disruption of barges. Go ahead and Google it, look up and down the river. There are all these marinas with all these boat slips. There's a lot going on on the river, and there aren't that many barges. Who knows how that's going to be managed? Segue to the next point. In a supervisory and policy-setting role, which I believe provides equitable public access to the Norwalk River and the federal channel, the Norwalk Harbor Management Commission, in conjunction with the Harbor Master, is charged with managing the river's traffic in accordance with health and safety regulations. Additional responsibilities also include reviewing detailed applications for relevant zoning applications, which of course included ONG's seven fifty-five Smith Street camp. In this regard, I would encourage the zoning commission and everyone to watch the watch and study, excuse me, the three relevant Harbor Commission meetings, which were held on February twenty-eighth, April twenty-fourth, and May twenty-second, all recorded on YouTube, because they reveal an approval process that is riddled with questions due to incomplete information, inconsistencies, representations, and statements of coordination and planning that are factually incorrect. As you have learned over the past few months, or will hear in testimony provided by others during the six-twenty public hearing tonight, or in other written correspondence, no one seems to have any record of prior barge volume, permits, or agreements pertaining to how and any of the barge traffic has been handled by ONG and Divine in the past, nor, as we learned earlier, has there been any reference to the barge operator who is responsible for managing the barges on behalf of and as part of any past, current, or future operational traffic and safety plan. Quite frankly, the ONG application was approved by the Harbor Commission without sufficient due diligence or Q and A and based largely upon a statement delivered by the applicant that the barges were, would be servicing an existing operation despite the fact that the ONG site has been inactive for approximately fifteen years. Furthermore, the Harbor Commission Chair repeatedly refused to reopen or review the February twentieth approval to debate safety and boat, barge, rowing traffic concerns despite numerous requests during the subsequent April twenty-fourth and May twenty-second live meetings. These requests were staged by the rowing and boating clubs, activists, environmentalists, and even several members of the Norwalk Harbor Management Commission itself. Over the past three months, and after new and material information surfaced about the correct sizing and volume of barges and the ongoing future and historic encroachment of the federal channel. Enough on that. I think you get the point. So on this, I still haven't found anyone that wants ONG to reopen this facility. Perhaps I'm at the top of the list. ONG, in my view, doesn't really need Norwalk. It's convenient, but I don't think it really moves the needle for them. In fact, by approving the seven dash fifty-five application, even without significant, even with significant conditions, Norwalk would be allowing ONG to reestablish and substantially expand the industrialization of its property in the heart of downtown and reverse the revitalization of the Wall Street, East Avenue, and Norwalk River area that's been in a steady decline since the devastating flood of nineteen fifty-five. Back to the point of ONG and the location of this site relative to their other operations. ONG and Norwalk's residents and business owners don't need the Smith Street site because ONG's other operations are located all around Norwalk, in fact, in Stamford, a whopping nine point three miles away, in Bridgeport, thirteen miles away, and in Danbury, twenty-one miles away. Surely there isn't much savings for ONG in reaching customers from a Norwalk base? And why would the city allow ONG to use Norwalk as a trucking depot and transfer station to reach customers in the surrounding towns of Westport, Wilton, New Canaan, and Darien? Seriously, all of these customers, Canaan, are easily reached by other ONG sites or competitors, and I very much doubt that the savings in diesel fuel costs, three dollars and forty cents a gallon for a few gallons for each triaxle would be passed along to consumers anyway. It's quite possible that ONG forgot about the Norwalk site until the recent boom in construction post-COVID. After all, it's been almost fifteen years, maybe twenty, since they did anything on Smith Street. That's when the asphalt plant closed down. At least that's when all the neighbors say, and everyone agrees that the whole area has changed completely. One hundred percent for the better. As you may well know, Smith Street isn't even listed on the ONG website. Thank you, Anthony, for pointing that out. But perhaps the best way to describe the situation is a existing non-use. Existing non-use. What a great way of describing the situation. And I borrowed that term from a city lawyer. Not that they're selling or doing anything on Smith Street because Frank Pirro has been leasing the site on a month-to-month basis for at least a decade for his driveway and parking lot paving business. According to Planning and Zoning, he's been doing this illegally and without permits. I would agree. I'm guessing ONG didn't know what they wanted to do with the property, and they certainly didn't want a documented lease with Pirro that would prove that ONG hasn't been working on the site because someone else has been all along and without a trace of paper trail with anyone, including zoning. By the way, the application implies that ONG produced materials for the construction of the SoNo Mall, like the first paragraph. It says that. That may be true, but I could tell you that none of the materials came from the Smith Street site for the mall, because I've been watching the activity there for almost ten years. That's when I bought my first property in the neighborhood in twenty fifteen. Nothing going on there. At least from ONG. So please allow me to now quickly list the reasons why the ONG proposal is bad for Norwalk. You've probably read them. I don't need to read them. Environment, waterway access, the public waterway access and recreational benefits. I do have a statement from Tanner Thompson, Norwalk Bike Walk Commission that I would like to read that is brief, if that's okay when I'm done. The rowing and boating communities, we know what the story is there. The eight marinas and two hundred and fifty boat slips, no safety plan, no operational plan, property values. I'm going to come back to that. By allowing ONG to expand its industrial footprint, I think that really provides a disincentive for the kind of development that we want along the river. Think about it. Blow the area up with a big industrial site? Who wants to put in another apartment building there? Or, for that matter, marine use, waterborne use, et cetera. Right? Some combination of, of the two. Why do we want to take it back to an industrial zone? Almost done. Roads and infrastructure. You'll probably hear a lot about that later, but the wear and tear that these trucks are going to put on the roads, someone needs to calculate that cost. Quality of life, health risk, pedestrian safety, pollution, mobility, connectivity. That's what all these people here are going to talk about. I'll just repeat it. Quality of life, health risk, pedestrian safety, pollution, mobility, connectivity. I cannot believe that the traffic report does, they don't even like, what kind of a traffic report doesn't measure the width of Moody's Lane? I wonder if that guy did the traffic report from a desktop. Did he ever visit the site? Seriously, it's really disturbing. The historic character of the bucolic and iconic neighborhood, Ty Bryant, talks about it. He's lived here for decades. He's seen this place from the beginning. He knows what it's like to have an industrial site that's active down there. Economic recovery, job growth, business investment. Well, I'm, I'm surprised that there's only three jobs that ONG would be able to generate or three parking spaces. That's, that's, that's shocking. I was going to give him that. Okay, few jobs. Wow, shocking. So let's get on to the last little screenshot here, if you wouldn't mind, sir. The final point I'd like to make is about economics. As per the attached slides, industrial properties produce a de minimis amount of tax revenue relative to residential properties. And ONG's seven fifty-five Smith Street site is testament to that with annual tax revenue of just a hundred and three thousand dollars. That's for a three-point-six acre parcel in the center of Norwalk, arguably prime real estate. Now, the site is inactive with the exception of Savitree and Office's leased in Norwalk River Rowing. So maybe that understates how much tax they'd actually pay. Well, conveniently, the best possible proxy we could have for how much they might pay as a fully operational site is right across the canal with Divine Brothers. Take a guess at how much Divine Brothers pays in tax. Ninety-six thousand dollars. Nothing. That's it. Really amazing. By way of comparison, the annual tax bill for Riverway condos, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. That's fifty-seven residential units right next door and head of the Harbor Apartments, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, sixty apartments. That's seven and a half times the tax revenue that those two industrial properties generate on both sides. Head of the Harbor, ONG, Riverway, Divine. Seven and a half times on the flanks, next to nothing in the middle. The real question is, if the site is reactivated, what happens to the value of those other properties? I spent time with the tax assessor. And I would encourage you to go talk to him yourself. It doesn't take a lot in terms of devaluation of just those two residential properties to completely offset any incremental tax revenue that would be created by a spanking clean, shiny new ONG operation on Smith Street. It just doesn't. I think the number is thirteen percent. And that does not even begin to account for all the other devaluation that happens in the area, whether it's on Wall Street, whether it's on East Avenue, Park Street, Morgan Avenue, any one of the other streets that are assembled along here, because when people get down to East Avenue, it's a disaster. And it's really going to be a disaster if every five or seven or eight minutes, there's a triaxle dump truck. No one can dispute the fact that that erodes value in the neighborhood and makes it a pretty crappy place to live and work and worship and visit and everything else. I mentioned the wear and tear. I suppose the last thing that I'd like to reference, and I'm sorry for taking so much time, but obviously I care because I think this is important and it's annoying that we're here because things like this shouldn't happen. What this, what also really bothers me is that this city has made such enormous progress in the past ten years in just about every single area you can imagine. I don't want to see our brand destroyed, but that's what's going to happen. I don't want Norwalk to become the laughing stock of the Connecticut coastal cities because it's got this twelve thousand dump truck transfer station in the center of the historic district. Because that's what's going to happen, right? Think about it. Our brand is a welcoming coastal city. To live, work and visit, it's a great brand. And for a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue? Why would we want to sacrifice that? I want it to be, I want Norwalk to be Connecticut's Marina City. Thank you.
Sarah Flade, Sarah Flade. After Sarah, we have Zuri Cole.
Hi, everyone, my name is Sarah Flade. I am a condo owner at Fort Dascoms Lane, Unit one seventeen, Riverway Condos. I want to state my opposition and on behalf of fifty seven owning residents. Because we did host a community party a couple of weeks ago. And had everyone come and talk about this and really rallied the troops. And you've received many letters from most of our residents. We heard from ONG and your representation that a lot of it was about operations, but not about the quality of life for your neighbors. And Fairfield County consumers who will have to deal with the traffic every day going in and out of Norwalk. The carcinogens from the diesel trucks would be dangerous from some of our residents that are autoimmune. There's at least three of them that I spoke to that have suffered from cancer before, this would be even worse. One woman even sold her condo recently because she heard about this and was so nervous that this would pass. So she sold at a high. I bought this condo only two years ago, paying sixty five above asking. Because I knew that this would help my quality of life and reduce my stress levels. And I knew that the river, like when I looked at it, I put the offer in the next day, knowing that. My life would be great and it has been, I love Norwalk, I'm from New Jersey, I work in White Plains. I deal with that forty five minute commute to an hour because I know how much I love this river. Living with my fiance, who's a Stanford firefighter, with my emotional support dog, who I walk four times a day. I admire the swans, the ducks, the rowers, we have so much fun on our balcony, watching the sunset every day. I drive three times a week to Westchester. It takes me ten to fifteen minutes to get some Dascoms Lane to I ninety five entrance. Imagine what that will be like with two hundred trucks per day or whatever the stat is. So much more traffic. I walk to therapy at Mid Fairfield Community Care Center once a week up Moody's Lane. I currently have to dodge the Savitri trucks. I will no longer be able to walk there. I see all the children and stressed out parents in the waiting room every day. How are they going to get to their appointments on time in the morning before school and after school? Right now, when I walk Riley to the Mill Hill District where I love to look out over Norwalk, I currently have to dodge. Savitri, Piro paving, Rolodex landscaping and La Meta and Sons, some of those aren't even allowed to be there. Wednesday morning, I had to stop short from hitting a rower. Because Savitri was coming up illegally up past Riverway. The rower forgot something in his car. And we, I had to stop short, he had to stop short, and we looked at each other like, oh, my God, we almost just hit each other. Some of our residents would get into serious car accidents over this. And what's it all for, just money? That's not what life is all about, it's about the quality of life. You'll have a lot of facts to come back with, but I want to ask you one question, all of you council people and ONG and your representatives. If this passes, how will you have peace of mind? How will you be able to sleep at night, knowing that you severely impacted negatively impacted the quality of life? Of thousands of Norwalk residents and Fairfield County residents through the tri-state area. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
After Zuri, we have, can't read the first name, Daniel Simons.
Thank you, thank you for having me. My name is V. Cole, I am a resident and owner at Fort Dascoms Lane. As an owner and resident at Riverway condominiums located near the ONG site. And a concerned Norwalk resident, I'm strongly opposed to any additional industrial. Activity along the Norwalk River, particularly from the ONG site, which abuts our property. As it is detrimental on many levels. Since moving to Norwalk and the Riverway condominiums over eighteen years ago. I've witnessed the complete transformation of the river and the surrounding neighborhood. With the ONG site shutdown, we saw the return of the swans and their families, the ducks, the egrets, the quumerants. To name a few of the riverfowl that we now see daily. When I first moved here, trash was blowing down Dascoms Lane from Smith Street and East Avenue throughout the day. Literally every day, bags and bags of trash would be piling up through our driveway. And into the river and out to Long Island Sound. We now landscape, we proudly continually make improvements to the property and we've transformed the area. Since two thousand and five, the Riverway condos, the Marquee condos, the Landing condos, the Rowing Club. And the head of the Harbor Apartments have all been built along the Norwalk River. Joining established entities like the Norwalk Boat Club, the Rowing Clubs and the neighborhoods of the Town Green and City Hall. Which have all transformed the river community into a residential neighborhood, featuring a wonderful walking path. For the whole entire community to enjoy and access the water and some of the best wildlife in Fairfield County. It is a jewel, plain and simple. And consideration of allowing the ONG facility to operate after fifteen years of inactivity. Should not be considered or tolerated. Letting ONG operate once again would degrade our entire quality of life. For all of the residents who have made, who have made this their home. It will degrade the quality of life for all Norwalk residents. It will diminish the property values and diminish the Norwalk tax base, which you've seen earlier. No matter what or how ONG uses the site. We will be subject to severe and extreme environmental impact. It will degrade our air quality, it will add to noise pollution and create health and safety hazards. For pedestrians, cyclists, rowers, boaters and drivers with the added barges and trucks and employees. We already deal with the barges and the dust from the Divine Plant across the river. The the dust literally blows into people who are cycling, walking down the street. It's it's visible in the air. The endless, and we also experience the endless noise from the trains and the ongoing traffic on East Ave. Norwalk does not need more dirt, noxious odors, poor air quality, noise, air and water pollution or traffic congestion. Also, as a member of the Board of Directors for Riverway Condominiums. I have met with our diverse population of residents and owners within our fifty seven units at Fort Dascoms Lane. We have people living here from of all ages, from young couples. And it's their very first home to young families with babies and toddlers to the elderly and everything in between. The one common thread amongst all of us is our love and passion for the water, the wildlife. And the ability to easily get outdoors and to walk and enjoy the Norwalk River. It is our biggest selling point and attraction. Our residents already feel in jeopardy when we take walks and have to walk down Smith Street with the truck traffic. And dust and dirt blowing from dirt piles left uncared for. One wrong turn and someone will get hit. Safety and health are big concerns for all of us. And adding an operating facility will make matters significantly worse. As a condominium, we do not want ONG to operate or even be approve, have any approval for this application. Over the years, the Riverway Association and residents have reached out to City Hall and ONG regarding the lack of care and maintenance for the property. This included piles and piles of trash, debris, odd parts, pallets, and even a sofa at one point piling up on the property. As well as large safes and other materials visible to all as you drove down the 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 street of Smith Street. Covered piles of materials and with tarps blowing off and debris blowing down Smith Street. It also included the dilapidated building with caved in roof that was eventually torn down about two years ago. Of decay, literally trees falling through it and growing out of it. This does not prove to set a good precedent going forward. As a taxpayer, I am thrilled, I also have pictures which I'll submit after this. As this, as a taxpayer, I'm thrilled that Norwalk has designated itself to be one of the greenest cities. The new Wall Street project is also another great investment. However, being a green city and this investment in Wall Street are both in direct contrast in all ways to reinstating ONG. The area being improved would simply be destroyed by the volume of trucks, trucks and tri轴s being suggested. The area will be a bottleneck and disconnected from the river and the Norwalk River Valley Trail. Another wonderful effort that would be diminished. ONG will not only hinder our revitalization and growth, but set us back twenty years plus. ONG will negatively and severely impact our air, water, natural habitat, traffic noise, safety. And quality of life in the immense area as well as in the immediate area, as well as the Norwalk in totality. This is the antithesis of what Norwalk is trying to do as a city, as a downtown and as a leader in building a green community. This plan does not benefit residents, owners, our downtown, and certainly not our health and safety. As a passionate and proud Norwalker, owner and resident of Nor, of Riverway. I ask that you not approve this application and do not allow ONG to commence operations. Thank you. It's V. Cole. Here are my pictures of the dilapidation and the way that the property was kept over the year.
After, after the speaker, we have Darius, can't read that last name. Bar Teddy.
My name is Daniel Simons, I am the pastor and priest at Saint Paul's on the Green in Norwalk. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Saint Paul's is at sixty East Avenue and I think we're the only institution that actually is impacted by two of the streets. Park Street and East Avenue, which collectively have seventy percent of the traffic, thirty and forty percent. So we'll be pretty heavily impacted. Saint Paul's is the the oldest institution in Norwalk in the same location. It was founded in seventeen thirty seven at the top end of the green. And it is not just used on Sunday, it is used seven days a week. We have a black owned daycare institution there that has over twenty families. And their arrival and departure time is exactly the time that they stated was the peak hours of transit for the trucks. In addition, it's a a community center that has a lot of other organizations that are moving through it during the day, Monday through Friday. So many of them, people are arriving on foot. All of them, all of them have to cross one of those streets or use one of those streets. My office looks out on all three of the streets, Saint Paul's Place being the other, which is relevant here. So I have experienced several of the accidents that showed up in the report. One was our assistant priest who was slammed into on Saint Park, Park Street. Another crashed through the historical cemetery wall on East Avenue, some of you may have seen that. But mostly I see that all the near misses. There are so many almost accidents because so many people actually cut through Saint Paul's Place to kind of game the lights. See which one they can get through fastest, and so the amount of speeding traffic to get through those lights. Means it really is hazardous all of the time as it is. And I'm really concerned with with what? Ninety six hundred or more triaxle trucks, I grew up in a construction family and I know how big a triaxle dump truck is. On small streets and it really, really takes them over. I also want to speak to the fact that over the last three years of work, we, Saint Paul's and First Congressional Church. Congregation Bethel and over twenty five civic organizations have worked together to make the green more accessible. We've seen it be a a center in the community and then lose that center and now start to recover that center. And brought over fifteen hundred people to the green for Earth Day on the Green this this year. That's been a real intention to try to restore, do our part to to really be community players and restore access to the green and centrality of the green. This, of course, would have a really, really harmful effect on that. So I won't speak any further because it just, I'll speak to our plot of land and the people that we see coming and going. But but speak against this for the community as in the direction that we hope it continues to move, thank you.
Thank you.
After Darius, we have John Jacobic.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Darius Fati. I am a board member and resident and homeowner at Marquee on the River condominium, which is located on the water at one forty four East Avenue. I've lived there for over seven years with my wife. We're both healthcare workers and we serve the community. Two weeks ago, we just welcomed our first child to this world and so I'm taking time away from him to be here tonight. The Norwalk River is a beautiful natural creation and it's full of life, as others have mentioned, with ducks, birds, swans. It's really a beautiful place to walk by. I walk along the river each and every day from one forty four East Ave along the river to Wall Street. You know, there's numerous health benefits to walking in nature, especially mental health benefits for the reduction of depression, anxiety. Cities should be encouraging walkability in nature especially, not doing things that make it less safe. So to familiarize yourself with the area, for those who don't know, especially the folks at ONG. There's a lot of condos and apartments that have are built on the river. And so you can walk along a beautiful boardwalk. Each property has their own boardwalk or trail along the river. So you can walk from one forty four East Avenue. All the way along the river, along beautiful boardwalks and trails. Up until you reach the weird ONG construction site. And then you're walking along this weird road that occasionally has big trucks pass by, as others have mentioned. It feels very unsafe. And then you get to Head of Harbor where you can again get to a nice, beautiful walk along the water and then you get to Wall Street. So it's a great idea for walkability. There's hundreds of people who walk along that route each and every day, I see them when I walk. They walk their strollers, their dogs, kids, teenagers run for exercise. And there are occasional trucks that do pass by currently. And many people I've spoken to avoid walking that route, avoid walking at all or avoid walking to Wall Street because it feels unsafe as is. Now imagine if fifty construction trucks an hour a day, which is, you know, six an hour, start rolling through that area. Want each and every one of you to think about your favorite walking route. Even the folks at ONG, think about your favorite walking route where you might walk your dog or your kid or your son or daughter, walk their grandkid. Imagine that route now having fifty construction trucks a day within feet of you. It's not like they're over here and you're walking way over there, literally, they will drive by within feet of you. Imagine how that would make you feel to have that happen. Who would want that to happen for anybody? Who would want that to happen for their town, their community? What will happen to the people who walk there every day? Walkability would likely decrease over time, probably some people might get injured or hurt, hopefully not. They've claimed no pollution, they've claimed no dust. Let me talk about the dust thing for a second here. I was over at Head of Harbor. About four weeks ago, and I was talking to someone who lived there, I don't really know many people who live there, but one guy happened to run into, was talking about his experience. He's lived there two years. He said he's about to leave because, you know, the Divine Bros construction is pretty frustrating across the way. He told me that. He doesn't park his car under the garage anymore. And I asked him, I was like, why, he said, you get garage parking, he said, if you park your car under the garage every day. It'll get covered in a layer of dust. Each and every day. And their properties, at least I'd say about five hundred feet away across the river from where Divine Bros. Storage facility is for gravel, I'm not sure exactly what they all do there. But a layer of dust every day, so he'd rather park his car in the scorching sun in the summer. To avoid the, I said, well, what what's parking not on under the garage do for the dust? And he says, well, at least when it rains, the dust will get washed off my car. There's clearly going to be a dust issue. There's clearly going to be a pollution issue, there's clearly going to be a quality of life issue here. They say, oh, only a one percent increase on East Avenue traffic due to these trucks? That's a pretty damn big increase, one percent? I mean, fifty trucks a day, how hard is it to get to I ninety five during rush hour as it? I mean, fifty trucks a day? How hard is it to get to I ninety-five during rush hour as it is? Pretty damn hard. So I want to keep it short and sweet here, but just think about your favorite walking route. Think about whether you'd want fifty trucks a day there. Think about the safety and the quality of life of the residents here. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Javovic and then Justin Bone. Justin? No? Yeah, well, no, John's not coming up, so we'll go to Justin.
Everyone, I'm Justin Bain. I live at Nine Morgan Avenue here in Norwalk. Actually, a property that I think this commission converted back to residential or prevented from becoming more commercial a few years back. So I have some paper, I have some papers here. I don't know if I can share that with you guys. I mean, I've sent I've sent letters on behalf of Morgan Avenue and Colonial Place residents, but do want to just read here today just our combined perspective to, to share with you. So I'm here tonight on behalf of the majority of residents, some who you've heard from, some who you will hear from tonight on Morgan Avenue and Colonial Place, who sent thirty-plus letters to this commission to express our overarching concern and objection to ONG's application. ONG's proposal to restart a material processing plant, as we learned tonight, that has been dormant since two thousand eight on Smith Street along the Norwalk River will add significant noise, dust, traffic and other pollutants to our community. And it will impact the daily lives, as you've heard from many people, and the lives of many of the wildlife and people who enjoy our neighborhood and its waterways. And I like the picture behind you that we're supposed to be enjoying. The proposed activities will involve transporting large quantities of raw materials and turn our neighborhood and the Norwalk River into a place of heavy industry. It is very clear, and the, the ONG and their application has said it. They're going to be processing and transporting a hundred and forty-four thousand tons of material per year or twelve thousand tons a month. That's enough gravel to lay six inches of that gravel for a hundred mile, one mile, a hundred mile, single lane stretch of roadway. They're looking to leverage ninety-six barges per year, eight barges per month, which, as we heard, could increase. That'll be traveling past beaches, our protected marches, marshes, condominiums, homes, boaters, the Norwalk Harbor Loop and our protected wildlife. They'll be adding ninety-six hundred trucks per year, eight hundred per month, forty per day, thirteen. That's about one truck every thirteen minutes. And you've heard this a million times, but I think we all really want to drive this home, right? One Class Eight diesel truck, which is usually what is required to carry this about this much material, at least from my research, which, because I don't think we've seen that kind of research or, or evidence in, in any of the submissions of, of what the details of these trucks will be and the impacts that will have. One of those trucks creates ninety to ninety-five decibels of ambient noise or twenty decibels higher than the EPA healthy average of seventy. That's the same as a prop plane flying over your house every thirteen minutes. I don't think anyone wants that or that is even aligned with the, with the, the, the overall Norwalk sound ordinance, which does, according to my research, have restrictions that that require seven, that, that cap the overall sound requirements from a commercial site at ten feet, I think, from the, the actual edge of the site, that requires them to be at seventy decibels or less, right? I know we heard tonight and have heard multiple times about the noise or the environmental impact of the site, but what about all of those trucks, right? I mean, they are bringing them to this location and bringing this to our neighborhood and, and need to take that into consideration. One Class A truck also emits thirty thousand pounds of CO2 per year. Again, something that was not considered or brought into the environment, environmental impact study that, that was brought before this commission. Overall, we understand that Norwalk is an amazing city with industrial roots, as the attorney has pointed out. And we promote that. But the Planning and Zoning Commission has the authority, the obligation and the right to take into consider, consideration the overall impact to the community, the coastal resources, because it's a CAM application as well, right? As well as future water-dependent activities. So in, in, in our view, there are a handful of key considerations that you should include in your decision. One, as has been pointed out, this is completely counter to the recent twenty-five million dollar investment plans announced to reinvigorate Wall Street to create more of a walkable city with sidewalks, trees, et cetera. It's not to recreate an industrial zone. It's counter to the environmental goals and the investment by the city to create a more natural barrier to rising water levels along the river. It will cause increased dredging, which we've already heard about. It's been going on. It's just going to continue. Right? And again, these are all requirements in the CAM application and, and your, you know, commitments and what, and what you can follow. It limits the natural barrier and reduction in space for wetland redevelopment. It creates impairment to the visual quality of the shoreline. It's hideous right now. It's just going to get worse over there. There's impact in the non-industrial use of the Norwalk River, which we've heard about and the congestion can, by congested, by congesting a narrow section of the river. And also the osprey that are there. It sounds like they're not actually touching that piece of property or the, or that, that asphalt plant, thank you. But there are osprey living there, which are also considered a protective species under the Federal Migratory Bird Treaty Act of nineteen eighteen and the Connecticut General Statute, Section twenty-six dash ninety-two. It's also inconsistent with the changes of the use of the Norwalk River and surrounding area over time. It has changed. The community has completely changed. The, the overall surrounding area has changed. And irrespective of the current zoning, the commission must take this into account as it relates to the broader vision of the city. And finally, which I think is the most important thing, which I've noticed is a theme in, in zoning applications as well. ONG has yet to provide a full environmental study covering the noise and the emissions impacts of the trucks and the overall impact to what they want to do here to our city and our people. I don't understand how that's possible or feasible, and it continues to kind of happen over time, right? And when we see these applications come through and, and things get unsolved and unanswered. I mean, I even heard some commission members mentioning this on some recent applications and, and even going through and, and providing that context in their approvals or denials of applications. But I don't see how that is feasible or appropriate to, to be honest, and, and I think we do deserve and, and are owed an answer to the noise and environmental impacts of this site. And just in closing, on behalf of the Morgan Avenue and Colonial residents, just we ask that you please take the above into consideration regarding your decision to grant or deny the ONG application because it's going to adversely impact our environments and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kayla Kelly and then Nancy McKinnon. Kayla Kelly. All right, then Nancy.
I'm Nancy McKeever. I live at the Landings at one thirty-six East Avenue. I've lived there since two thousand eight. Our owners are seven, we have seventeen condos and fourteen of those signed this petition, not, some of which got scanned and and put on the website, some that didn't. Our, one person had to leave. Her, her husband is, has breathing, breathing problems. The people at the Landings are concerned about traffic. They're concerned about air pollution and they're concerned about keeping the river and making the river what it can be. I turn right to go left when I come out of the condo lots of times. I, we heard a very good organized presentation from ONG and addressing some of the things that were raised in the environmental report. I'm having a little trouble completely trusting them. I never, I never, I don't know whether I should have received a, a notice. I did not receive a notice. I've been particularly interested in the river since January. I know that they're not in operation there, but they do own that piece of property. And the, the, was a flood at a high tide in January. And immediately after that, I noticed gravel and large pieces of, of stone in the bay next to the, to the left of the condo. I'd never seen that. If, if you're familiar with mud flats, it was completely mud flats. You probably would have sunk down in it. So, and I could only assume that that came from the operation that was in, in presently operating in January, then kind of disappeared and then has re, is now in operation again. And it has very high mounds of blacktop that's been ground. I can only, I hope if, if this gets passed, I hope that someone is going to really make sure that some of the things that ONG is saying is really going to happen. We haven't had a hurricane since, I'm not sure, we haven't had a hurricane since I've been here. My filter in my furnace since the January, it's never, it's always been clean. It was, it was, there was significant dust in my filter and I live on, on the fourth floor and a lot farther from the ONG property. So I just wanted to say that the, the owner, owners at the Landings are very concerned about this project from any point of view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alessandra. And then John Lesko.
Good evening, everyone.
Can you lower it? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Apologies for my, being in my scrubs. I came directly from work, so I didn't have a chance to change. My name is Alessandra. My wife and I live on Melbourne Road, right around the corner. We have a twelve-month-old daughter, Marina. Eight years ago, nearly to the day, newly married, we were looking for a home, a place to set down roots and build a community. And despite not knowing a single soul in Connecticut at the time, we chose to take a chance on Norwalk. We have witnessed firsthand with joy the incredible strides this city, which we are proud to call our home, has made in investing in its constituents, doing the right thing, enacting legislation that serves our underprivileged citizens that emphasizes community building, that facilitates bringing us together with events at historical landmarks like the Town Green, helping us to foster relationships with each other, to trust our neighbors, become friends, be excited to raise our kids in community outdoors, breathing fresh air, riding bikes, playing ball, doing the things that make our lives worth living and our taxes worth paying. Lemonade stands on hot days, barbecues with folks down the block, attending our places of worship. Our daughter was baptized at St. Paul on the Green last season. We all just heard from Father Daniel. We love that along with other families in our area and keeping with some traditions of faith, we can walk to our place of worship. My wife and I are young professionals raising a family and just one of the thousands of families who live in these residential neighborhoods directly off of East Avenue. I'm speaking from my heart for my community when I plead with you, the Zoning Commission of Norwalk, enacted to make decisions to protect the interests of families like mine. Do not industrialize our residential neighborhoods by considering this proposal further. Do not turn our communities into a perpetual construction zone. Do not sign off on further pollution of our beautiful waterways, which so many have recently worked so hard to restore on a never-ending stream of gas guzzling trucks with noxious fumes careening down East Avenue, making the already daunting walk from our home to St. Paul's Church that much more treacherous. Think of the children in all these apartments and houses who will never be able to safely play outside with the congestion and combustion of all these engines running without respite. My family believes in progress, so much so that we invested in an electric vehicle because like the city of Norwalk, we believe that a more sustainable energy sources are the future for all of us. It would be the very height of hypocrisy for the Norwalk Zoning Commission to allow this concrete asphalt plant to resume unimpeded after almost two decades dormant, which is now in total conflict and direct conflict with the health, safety and wellbeing of the community members who make Norwalk the best city in Connecticut. You owe it to us to live up to Norwalk's promise while we work day in and day out, keeping up our end of the bargain. Thank you.
Thank you.
After John Lesko, I believe it's Mark Allen and then Ginger Fredericks. About fifteen more.
Good evening, Commission. My name is John Lesko. I'm the owner of Raymond Funeral Home, five East Wall Street here in Norwalk. And prior to COVID, I actually used to sit over here and I served on the commission and I respect what you do and I know it's very difficult to go through all of this information and sort out the right from the wrong, what's good for the neighborhood, what's not good for the neighborhood. I want to talk a little bit about my building, the location, the impact that I feel that we're going to have with these extra dump trucks running up and down the roads. Our building was originally set in about the eighteen fifties. It has an original foundation of stone. And we keep it up very well. We love maintaining our building and keeping it pristine, but with excessive triaxle and large vehicles going up and down East Wall Street, it certainly shakes the foundation, causing an issue with having to restipple and to kind of destroy the structure. So we're constantly fighting to keep the foundation intact. With the extra traffic, we feel that it's, it's going to really impact the building itself. Where we have so many of these trucks that are going to be going up and down Hubble Street. You know, we have another funeral home located right there on East Avenue in Hubble. The, the excessive traffic, the noise from the braking systems, some of them use Jake brakes. It impacts the the peacefulness of, of the buildings, honestly. And in our business, we kind of need to have peacefulness for our families. You know, I, when I would sit in the seats, you know, I, I was looking for the points. I was looking for people to keep it short, keep it sweet, make your point. And then I can make my decision based on, you know, what is being presented. The last time ONG actually operated, other than Piro, and I know Piro's been operating there for some time because he redid my parking lot. And I asked him, you know, where's all this going? He said, oh, we're right down the road there. So your parking lot is going to be processed and we're going to put it in that process into somebody else's parking lot, you know, next week. So I understand Piro's been there and I didn't know if that was legally legal. I have no idea. That's not up to me. But the last time ONG actually utilized the property, I mean, there was dial-up internet. So you have to wonder. Okay, so back then, maybe that was the best use of that property before there was in environments and residents and apartments and condos and, and a lifestyle, really. But is it the best use of that property now? Is it really where we want to go when we have been moving forward for a more walkable, sustainable area around Park Street and East Wall Street? My favorite office on my property is my front porch. I have a wraparound porch and on nice days I sit out there with my computer and I'll do my work out there. And I don't mind watching traffic, but I got to tell you, putting another fifty triaxles coming up and down the road. And don't forget, we still have to add the empties coming in and out. So is it really fifty or are we talking, you know, eighty times we have trucks coming in and out? You know, it it's gonna affect a quality of life now. I know our names on the deeds and we all own our properties, but in my business, I know your house isn't going to follow my hearse to the cemetery. So I know this is a renter's term, but why aren't we all entitled to quiet, peaceful enjoyment of our properties? And if that's the case, then why can't we enjoy our community as we should? Quiet, peaceful, helping each other out, watching out for each other. So that's what I'm asking you to do is to please watch out for our community because nobody else will. So we're asking you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have this one last speaker. And then I'll ask for a vote to continue the hearing until next Wednesday night, which is our next meeting. Please go ahead.
Thank you, sir. As I often speak as the president of the Wall Street Neighborhood Association, today I'm speaking more as just a citizen of Norwalk with respect to Steve Kleppen and all of you fellows and all of you fine people. I I know that the complexities of this are really hard to navigate. I appreciate all the work that you do. I also want to speak in terms of where I do business at Factory Underground located at sixteen Isaac Street in the Wall Street neighborhood. And I wanted to say, I want to preface this by saying I do have great respect for Norwalk industry. You know, I think about the Divine Brothers who are my neighbors. They are a Norwalk family owned business that has existed for over a hundred years. And it's hard to ignore the industrial roots of our great city. And while I'm not a fan of any barges on the river, I'll be upfront about that. I mention them because at least I know Tom Divine. He's involved with the community and he's been an excellent neighbor. So not to assume out of hand that ONG could not be a better neighbor in the future. It's just honestly hard to give them any benefit of the doubt when our only interaction with them has been through this application and their attorney. I would say if anyone from ONG had come to a one of our many public meetings with our local leaders, maybe that would have assured us of their intentions to be good neighbors. Up until tonight, all we could have gone by were the letters and numbers of this application, which quite frankly, have been pretty terrifying to most of us. It's the reason that there have been so many people here tonight. You know, those of us who live and work in Wall Street, Norwalk Green and the City Hall communities, that's the reason. And yet, you know, the numbers that we heard tonight are even higher than we had feared. Now we're hearing about eight hundred to a thousand truckloads a month. And that's just shocking. So of course, as John Lasco pointed out, you have to double the number to come up with the number of truck trips through the neighborhood, empty and full. So a potential of sixteen hundred to two thousand truck trips through a mostly residential neighborhood to and from the site. And up one of the tightest roads in the area, beloved Moody Lane. You know, for the traffic consultants who may not have walked the area as I did just this morning. Moody Lane seems like a very narrow road because it has no sidewalks. So it's already precarious to walk down Moody Lane to the water. And you may not have been aware of this to those of you from the who did the traffic report, but there's a brand new college dormitory right at the intersection of Moody Lane and East Avenue. To me, this just reeks of public safety hazard. According to Jim Travers, the city of Norwalk's director of traffic, parking and mobility and nobility, I suppose. We've had an eighty three percent increase in traffic fatalities nationwide since two thousand nine. He says in two thousand twenty two, we surpassed two thousand twenty one and has arisen every single year. So to repackage an older traffic study and say that nothing has changed in the time that's passed, it's clearly traffic conditions are changing. You know, I heard Sermon to Say here tonight, a phrase that kind of made me laugh. He said, speeding down East Avenue. And it's kind of funny because anybody that's ever driven down East Avenue during peak hours when twenty percent of ONG traffic will be entering the road, our local traffic is completely out of control. Now, this data Mr. Travers cited is part of research that's gone into the city's complete streets program, which is all about increasing public safety while making our city more walkable and pedestrian friendly and an effort to reduce local traffic. Considering the work that's gone into making Norwalk streets safer, I hope you'll keep this data in mind when you consider the impact of a thousand truckloads on our local streets. As for the barge traffic, I don't want to be redundant to what's been said, but you know, I've learned a lot tonight about federal walkway, waterways and slack lines, but any layman can stand on the Wall Street Bridge and look down the water and imagine two barges side by side and know that you're going to put the Noah Boat Club out of business. You know, if you want to know how I would define a good neighbor, look at Sue Powers and the members of her club. They set a very high bar. ONG can learn a lot about being a good neighbor from the North Bowl Club. So as for the numbers and the letters of the application, I was going to touch on some of the numbers not in the application related to the noise level. Somebody beat me to that. It's true that a single diesel dump truck dump truck emits a noise level of ninety five decibels. I'm an audio engineer and I can tell you, for those of you are not familiar with the decimal system, a landing commercial jet is rated eighty decibels. An industrial excavator such as they will use on site is one hundred and twelve decibels. Military jet is one hundred and fourteen. By OSHA standards, the limit for noise beyond which an operator has to employ ear protection is eighty decibels. So with respect to the noise ordinance of the city of Norwalk, which ONG needs to adhere to, the law says, and I quote, "It is recognized that people have a right to and should be assured an environment free from excessive sound and vibrations that may jeopardize their health or safety or welfare or degrade the quality of their life." This chapter is enacted to protect, preserve and promote the health, safety, welfare, quality of life for citizens of Norwalk through the reduction, control and prevention of noise. With respect to the volume of these trucks, no pun intended, the overall scale of what is proposed in the application, I would submit that they could not adhere to the letter of this law. In closing, I just want to acknowledge what Todd Bryant said earlier. We're no longer the heavily heavily industrial city that we once were. We're on a we're a city that's on the cusp of a cult complete cultural transformation with a huge residential boom. We're seeing a huge influx of new residents. People finding our neighborhood a desirable place to live, to eat, to do business, to go to school. I think we have to protect this progress by making sure that approving an application like this will not do more harm to the public than good. In closing, I just want to say thank you for keeping the future of Wall Street, Norwalk Green, City Hall neighborhoods in mind when you consider all that you have heard tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before I I call for ending this for this evening, can I just have a show of hands for how many more of you who are actually here wish to speak? Okay, really, it's very, it's very close to that fifteen number.
I was just thinking, and I don't, I got a long ride myself. How many of non Mr. Green, your speakers, if it's just general public?
Non residents, non residents.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Attorney Green is going to have himself and some speakers, but if you are not part of that group, how many were that?
Yeah, still a bunch. Still too many. All right, you're you're certainly all welcome back Wednesday. Those of you who haven't had an opportunity to speak and want to will will welcome you on Wednesday.
Don't be talking on this.
Well, we we have some other.
We may come on Wednesday, we'll have the list of the we'll know.
Yes, we'll know who has not yet spoken.
They'll be able to go first.
Exactly.
Four hours.
Right. Can I have a motion?
Real quick, Mr. Schulman, it's also the case that folks can continue to submit written testimony between now and our next meeting. They'll be be able to continue to submit written testimony, is that right?
Right.
Yes. Great, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that for folks.
It's fine, Chapin, thank you.
Yep.
Can I have a motion to continue the hearing next Wednesday?
Yes.
All right, Richard has moved and we we have a second from Darius. All those in favor, show of hands, please. Okay, it's unanimous, so we'll we'll end this this evening, but we have three other very quick, no, two other very quick items we have to address. And those are the zoning regulations. We need to open those hearings and we'll let people leave, but we're going to have to open open those hearings and then continue those to next week as well. Pardon me? No, no, nobody's got the patience for that. We'll deal, we'll deal with that next week.
We're just opening them to continue them?
Exactly.
Motion to open?
That would be twenty twenty four dash twenty seven R zoning regulation text amendment, article four and article nine to revise the definition of lot we're building site with. Okay. So Nick has made the motion. Darius is seconded again with a raise of hands. This is to continue to open and continue the hearing on that item to next week.
This is item B on the agenda.
That's right. Item C, Planning and Zoning Commission zoning regulation text amendment to article four to amend the residential building height determinations and modifications to frontage billing building types permitted in the CD four zone. And Darius moved and Nick seconds again, all those in favor? Okay. Any? Yeah, is there anyone opposed? Nick, I did see your hand go up. Okay. All right.
That was again to move it forward to next time.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the minutes we certainly can wait with.
Do we need to do that for fifty two Samus?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll deal with Samus also. But I don't believe we have to open that. That's just an action.
Yeah.
So that 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 we'll just deal with Wednesday. But thank you for bringing it up, Chapin. I have no other, are there any comments?
I would say just keep in mind all the positive comments of all the good things you've been doing and approving for next time somebody comes out.
I don't remember.
Everybody is saying all the great wonderful things that are happening in
in Norway.
I, yeah.
But we're not getting credit for any of those. Okay.
That was kind of interesting, wasn't it?
Comments, comments of commissioners? Anybody wish to say anything?
Not tonight, but I've got a list that's growing.
No, leave the minutes. We have, we have three minutes, we'll deal with four next week.
Hold on, the next Wednesday we have already on the books.
Yes.
Do we need to?
Add another.
Do we have to worry about Thursday as well at this point, given the volume of people and the rebuttals and intervening hasn't been gone yet?
I would, I think it's a good idea. I think I'm just looking at Brian and I were looking at stuff as.
We're back.
Yeah. If we can get just, we're so close to getting over this stuff done. It's just, but every time these continue, it just pushes everything you said.
We're all aware.
Because we have to vote on this next week.
Yeah, it has to be voted on by the thirtieth and the twenty seventh is Thursday and you're not going to meet Friday or Saturday or Sunday.
Right.
So are we going to add another meeting or are we going to add another meeting before the meeting to just?
What happens if people keep talking and you can't? No. Yeah, I think you're here all night.
I don't want to choose to stay until.
Yes.
Like, that's the other option. We can just say we're here until three in the morning, two in the morning.
Yeah.
We've done some of them.
Right.
Yeah, well, we not we not this.
We're going to be grumpy.
Well, do you want? I'm already grumpy. Do we want to? As a protection, set aside Thursday?
Yeah, I mean, that's the only option is if you.
All right, why don't you send out a notice, just making sure we'd have four? And by by the way, I want to recognize that Diana is with us this morning. Well, you have a much shorter video that you need to watch in order to be eligible to vote next.
Is from the commissioners that are here and I can email everybody. Is everybody available the twenty seventh, which is Thursday?
As far as I know, I am.
I'm not available next week, unfortunately, I'm sorry.
Either the twenty sixth or the twenty seventh?
I've got a work trip coming up. I, yeah, I can't make it. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, we'll miss you.
Yeah, I I have a lot of comments, but yeah, it's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do what you have to do, Chap.
Yeah, so I I think we can Brian and I'll figure the agendas out.
Okay.
Get that straightened out tomorrow.
Hopefully, at the very least, we get this finished.
I think you.
And then, you know, we get small things like Samus out of the way and get maybe our two items out of.
Yeah, I got a bunch of other small stuff too. And you have the Costco executive session, which is the first thing on your agenda.
Right, right.
Thirty minutes or so.
Would we just do that at five?
Yes, that's one of them.
No, it's too late to do that. It's already been.
No, it's executive session.
Yeah, if you're next Wednesday.
Oh, okay. Right, right.
Sorry, so are we going to do Costco at five next Wednesday?
I can see if they're available like five thirty.
Yeah, why don't we do it at five thirty?
It's never a half an hour.
But it's not, it's not going to be, it may not be an hour and I don't want to just sit around.
That's fair.
You know? Okay.
It will be the same agenda, so it would just be.
That's right.
First item on the agenda. So for the executive session, you have to open the meeting, kick everybody out.
Right.
Turn Zoom off.
Or just not let everybody, just not let anybody on?
No, I think you have to.
Even though we're going to kick them off?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can just set up two.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to.
Okay.
You have to close it, you have to open it, kick them out, bring them back, state what you did, then go on your agenda.
Okay. Fine. All right, are we ready to adjourn?
Sorry, it's the continuation of the meet meeting next week. Is that in person again?
Yes, it will be.
Yeah, we just have to.
It will be because we 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 still have a lot of people here who wish to speak.
Yeah, we'll confirm the room and everything tomorrow.
Can I say something? I I was invited to join us at three forty two this afternoon and the fifty two Samus issue, and I believe it's just procedural from here, is it not? Or do we have?
I I apologize for that, but we will address it at our meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah, thank you for your patience, truly.
All right.
Okay.
All right, so can I have a motion to adjourn? Richard has moved and Darius is seconded. Show of hands. We are adjourned. See you all next Wednesday.